Now that I asked you to take your seat, would you please stand for the pledge of allegiance? Good evening, everyone. Okay. This is the September sixteenth, twenty twenty-four regular meeting of the Morris Plains Planning Board. I hereby announce that this meeting is being held in accordance with Chapter two thirty-one of the Open Public Meeting Act. Proper notice of meeting dates has been given to the Morris Newsbeat and the Morris County Daily Record and posted on the bulletin board in the borough. This meeting is a judicial proceeding. Any questions or comments must be limited to issues that are relevant to what the board illegally consider in reaching a decision, and decorum appropriate to a judicial hearing must be maintained at all time. Roll call, please.
Mr. Oregon Plaid. Mr. Garrett Fabula.
Present.
Mrs. Kelly.
Present.
Mrs. Decker.
Present.
Mrs. McCloskey.
Here.
Mr. Kelly.
Here.
Mr. Bezzel.
Here.
Mayor Carr.
Present.
And Mr. Kudusla.
Present.
Good to see you all. We tried to have that TV set up. Unfortunately, it wouldn't. They couldn't get it to work, so everybody's going to have to be looking at the screen up above. Before we get started, I would like to introduce all of you to our professionals here. To my right is Andy Brewer, Esquire of the firm of Marzidi Falcone. He is a partner in the firm, and the firm has represented the planning board for over forty years. Over on the end is William Ryden, our professional engineer of the firm of Anderson and Densler. This engineering firm has been representing the planning board, the board of adjustment, and the borough for about forty-five years. Next is Elizabeth Lahaney, professional planner, partner of the firm of Phillips, Price, Rigel, Lahaney and Hughes. And this firm has represented the planning board, board of adjustment, and borough for about eight or nine years. Next is Harold Maltz of Hummel Associates, Inc. He's our professional engineer and a professional planner. And Mr. Maltz has been our traffic, has been a traffic expert for about fifty-five years, and he's been our traffic expert for seven years. Karen Coffey, who is the secretary to the planning board. And we have here tonight Diane Batizi, who is the stenographer, who will be reporting this meeting. And you all know the planning board members, okay? Because we are your friends and your neighbors. Here relatively, the planning board members have lived in the borough of Morris Plains for over four hundred years. They've all raised their families here. They're all volunteers to the planning board. Some are on other boards and committees as well, and have, all of them, have attended extensive training for this position. And I can assure you, they all love the community of Karen. I'm going to turn it over to our attorney, Andy Brewer, and he's going to give you kind of the rules of the road tonight.
Good evenings. It is very good to see everybody here. It's exactly what small government and the public is supposed to be. They come out and have interest, so I'm glad to see everybody here. Just going to talk some general comments and some specific comments about the application that will start tonight. As the chair said, this is a judicial proceeding. So pretend that you're in a courtroom. That's really how we're supposed to proceed. There are rules on who can speak, when, or under oath. Everybody will get a chance to question later, but that's really, you know, keep that in mind. This is a large venue. The acoustics are a little bit different than the other one. We have a court reporter taking down everything, so. My second reminder, please keep in mind that when one person is speaking, if there are comments, or people can interject or interrupt, it is going to slow the proceedings. Other ones won't be able to hear, and it's not fair to the public who want to hear what we're saying or the professionals that need to in order to make sure everything is done correctly. So please allow one person speaking at a time. Everyone will get a chance to speak. As I said, there's a stenographer taking everything down, so we'll have a good, clean record of what happens. The witnesses that speak and talk about what will and will not happen are all under oath. They're going to be sworn in, just like in the courtroom. Everybody, the members of the governing, I'm sorry, of the board, will be able to ask questions. The professionals will be able to ask questions of every witness, and everybody in the public will have an opportunity to ask questions of each witness too. But it follows a, you know, a regular order, so it all gets done, gets done well and easily. Some specific comments about what may or may not be in the air. I've heard that there may be some petitions or emails or letters, people that couldn't make it, you know, who signed things, and they have thoughts about this application. Unfortunately, like a courtroom, the only time evidence comes in is when somebody's on the road. You get to swear, so emails or other things from outside, if the person is not here, those can't come into the record. The board can't consider them. You can't say, "I heard somebody else say something." That is not something that this board is allowed to listen to. As I said, you can all question the witnesses. And then just a small comment on the role of this board versus the role of the governing body. The governing body, the mayor and council, they adopt the zoning ordinance. That does a lot of things. One thing is it divides various areas of the borough into different zones where different things are permitted. So in some zones, you have single-family residential areas, some commercial, some warehousing. The governing body makes those decisions. The governing body has decided that this area, that we're here today, is appropriate, and you can have this type of establishment. This board is not allowed to overrule that decision. Then the board looks at the rules that are made by the governing body, and they make sure that those rules are followed in a site plan application. They look at what's going to be built, where is it built, how far away? Is it going to interfere with the neighbors in any way? Can you mitigate those problems, make sure the traffic circulation, all those things? But setting the rules, that's simply not, you know, what this board does. It's kind of like asking a police officer, "Hey, why don't you change, you know, what the mile per hour in the street can be?" They don't have that authority. This board doesn't have the authority to change the rules. The governing body does that. They set it. They make sure the rules are followed, however. So that being said, I'll turn it back to the chair to continue the meeting.
Thank you. Next, we have comments from the public on, to speak on matters that are not on the agenda. Is there anyone that's here to speak on a matter that's not on the agenda? Come forward, state your name and address and your business.
Hi, do you need Greg Devine? This is our? Okay. Check. Very good. My name is Greg Devine. I live in ninety-one Sun Valley Way, Morris Plains, New Jersey. Just to avoid, I understand you outlined sort of a legal procedure to ensure we're not blocked from asking particular questions when the agenda item covering the matter on the screen is addressed, is this non-agenda discussion period. If we, you very effectively outlined and sort of structured the process that the attorney body gatherer is going to consider, how you're going to consider. So to help me understand, is this the right agenda time to ask? What exactly is the, are the rules that are prescribed to you by the governing body? What is the basis for which you can approve, deny, delay the decision after the agenda topic that covers the drive-through regard? What would be the basis of a denial? What rights do you have as a board under the dictation given to you by the governing body? Do you have it?
I don't think it would be, let's see here, the rules of the road here. The municipal land use law is a state statute. The municipal land use law delegates the authority to, for administrative hours to set zoning. And if you follow that, then you can, they can set the zoning. The zoning then will consist of what can be done in various areas and the mechanics of doing it. We're, how big buildings could be, accessories, traffic parking, all those other things. Those rules are set in the ordinance. It is then, and the municipal land use law sets the parameters on, you have to read that, it's a, one third of this book, and then about the other two-thirds explains it. Explains how this board is to consider an application that comes forward, to listen to all the information in favor of it, to compare it to the ordinance, and if there is any request that there be variances or waivers from some of the requirements, they consider it. And there are set criteria by which this board is legally obligated to consider those. And, but that is up to the applicant to see what the application is. So it would be late for your chore, along with incorrect, to ever answer a question before an application that comes on to say, "Why could you deny it?" That's, that, it's not what the board should be thinking. This board is here to listen to what this applicant says, present all its evidence, and then do its job, pursuing the municipal land use law.
Okay, so, right, you outlined the process, but we're at the point where I think you've articulated clearly the governing body had completed the rezoning, so the applicant's going to be presenting in question. But again, if you're, this board, I imagine, would understand that if certain requirements weren't met, that could be a basis of, not, of no decision or a decline?
I don't think this board, nor would I, answer what might or might not be a reason to decline. That's simply not something this board should address.
Okay, so at this time, this board does not have any idea if they've met all the requirements?
There's not been any evidence presented. We haven't started the application, and you're now going toward what's on the agenda, so that's kind of what it is. There's nothing before this board to hear yet. There's no evidence.
Okay. Just procedurally, if you could point me to a link or a website, where would one be able to obtain not just the minutes of the rezoning, the governing body that made a decision with the basis? Where would be the right place to go to get any writings, materials, communications, otherwise on governmental or non-governmental systems between any of the parties that were involved, and the applicant, or anybody, any representatives of the applicant?
That's not within the purview of the planning board. The planning board hears this application, it's not the repository of documents. And I'm not being facetious, but I wouldn't want to give you something wrong. You can call up the municipal clerk to write in regular business hours, and they can point you out how to request an application.
So if I understand it right, the agenda item, the main topic, will be strictly, the discussion will be strictly limited to the adequacy of their current status and what they're asking for?
Not going to say what or not the applicant is going to present. Yeah, this is non-agenda items. I cannot describe what might or might not happen, because this is for non-agenda, non-agenda items.
Okay, so the public won't be cut off if they ask questions that I'm trying to ask right now? Like what could be a basis of a denial? So that could be asked during the agenda?
Well, we'll go forward and see what happens in the application. Nobody, as a general matter, people are not cut off if they ask questions that are appropriate and relevant to the application. That's, that's why these meetings are held in public.
Okay, well, that's why I came to the pre-agenda item discussion, because it'd be unfortunate if folks were limited or cut off from being able to ask questions that are relevant to that. So since you clarified it, pretty much any questions related to the application and what's being considered for us, everybody should have a chance to question. Okay, good to know. Thanks.
Karen, do we have any correspondence?
No, we do not.
And Mr. Kelly, could we have the reading of the bills, please?
That purchase order number two zero two four one six zero six from Phillips, Price, and Rigel for planning a general for the month of July for six hundred and forty dollars. That purchase order number two zero two four one seven six two from Marzidi Falcone L.L.P. for legal services dated to nine eleven point four for one thousand two hundred and ninety-five dollars. No questions, I make a motion to approve the purchase orders.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Garabia.
Yes.
Mrs. Kelly. Mrs. Decker. Mrs. McCloskey.
Yes.
Mr. Kelly.
Yes.
Mr. Bezzel.
Yes.
Mayor Carr.
Yes.
And Mr. Kudusla.
Yes.
Next on the agenda, we have the approval of the August nineteenth, twenty twenty-four regular reading of the planning board. Are there any corrections or additions? Could we have a motion to approve the minutes?
I'm over.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain?
Abstain.
Next, we have the committee reports, the Minor Site Plan Committee. Master Plan Review Committee.
Bill report.
Do we have any new business? Do we have any old business? Okay, seeing none, we will move on. This is the application PB one dash twenty-four McDonald's USA LLC. We have Mr. Frank Vitoli, the attorney for the applicant. Before we begin, Karen, do you have proof of mailing?
Yes, I do. Everything is in order. Service and everything is in order.
And the Astros are paying?
Astros pay.
Okay. Andy, the notice was adequate? Okay, thank you. Mr. Vitoli? No? I can hear you, but I don't think everyone else can.
Hello, hello?
There you go.
Good evening, everybody. Can you hear me in the mic? All right. My name is Frank Vitolo. I am with the law firm of Sills Commiss in Groves. We are the attorneys for McDonald's USA LLC, and we are the applicants this evening. When I came about an hour ago and saw the crowd, I called back to my office, and I said, "Send me the biggest person we have." So next to me is Josh Kudre, the biggest guy we have, sitting up next to me. The property here, we're here to talk about tonight, ladies and gentlemen, is four fifteen and four thirty-five Speedwell Avenue. On the tax maps, it is designated as block twenty-three, lots four and five. The property is located in the B-two Business District Zone. Drive-through restaurants are permitted uses in the B-two Business District Zone. Other permitted uses in the B-two zone are automobile repair, automobile sales, bars, and car washes. Gas stations are also a conditional use in the B-two zone. We are not here for any of those this evening. The existing conditions on this property include a vacant one-story building with approximately twenty-four hundred nineteen square feet, and it's the former Friendly's Restaurant, which you all know. And on the other lot, there is a two-story office building with a thousand three hundred and four square feet. The improvements that we are proposing, ladies and gentlemen, are to demolish and remove all of the existing structures and improvements, and to construct a McDonald's-branded drive-through restaurant with a building footprint of approximately three thousand thirty-six square feet with a two-lane drive-through, on-site parking, and related improvements. The applicant is also proposing to improve the pedestrian access to the site by modifying the existing crosswalk. The applicant's civil engineer will provide a detailed review of the site plan and the improvements that were proposed. We are requesting some relief here this evening for the number of off-street parking spaces. Forty-one are required, thirty-two are proposed. And we're also looking for some relief for signage, buffering, and some of the design criteria in the ordinance. The applicant's professional planner will provide the requisite testimony to justify the requested relief. Board and persons assembled, this is not McDonald's first rodeo. They are very familiar with issues relating to locating a business downtown and in close proximity to residential zones. As you will hear during the testimony this evening, the building that we're proposing here is located in the center of the lot to maximize the setbacks from its property lines. We are only seeking the parking we need and no more. And we're proposing to relocate the crosswalk at Speedwell, so it's further away from the driveway and safer. We are also proposing an eight-foot fence in the rear of the property. We intend to install a state-of-the-art air scrubber that will reduce by ninety percent or more any odors coming from the restaurant. And we will ensure that noise coming from the site is kept to an absolute minimum. These are just a few of the things you will hear tonight in recognition of where this proposed restaurant is located. As you know, there was a Friendly's restaurant on this site for more than thirty years. So the property owner is no stranger to the concerns of running a business where young people may congregate. We have designed a site that addresses those concerns. We are here to present our case this evening, but we're also here to listen. If there are ways that we can tweak or revise the proposal to address a legitimate concern, we will, of course, consider it. One thing we're not going to engage in, however, is a debate about food. This is still America, and the government can't tell you where you can or cannot eat. Not yet, anyway. I would just note that some of the people who complain about fast food are the same ones that tote around five-hundred-calorie coffee drinks. Trust me, there are and will be in the future many places in Morris Plains and adjoining towns for you to spend a small fortune on restaurants. However, not everyone can afford those prices, and McDonald's provides at least one alternative. It's a simple model that has stand the test of time. Food and drink delivered quickly at a reasonable price, served by local employees, many at their first job that they'll ever have. As you might expect, McDonald's will be a significant community partner, and we expect it will be involved in local and civic organizations in Morris Plains for many, many years to come. So with that, board, I would like to start our application. For our first witness this evening, oh, let me give you a roadmap, I forgot to. This evening, we have our civil engineer, Tiago Duarte, from Dynamic Engineering. And if we get through Mr. Duarte, we also have Craig Carrigway, who is our traffic engineer. And we, we're not going to be too ambitious. We're going to limit it to those two witnesses this evening, so everybody has a chance to ask their questions. So with that, I'd like to call Tiago Duarte.
Please raise your right hand, state your name, spell your last.
Get the microphone set up. Please raise your right hand, keep it raised, state your last name and spell your last. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you'll give this evening before this board? Do you swear or affirm the testimony you'll give this evening before this board will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you out?
I do.
All right, Mr. Duarte, could you please, um, you can sit for a sec. Could you, uh, please give the Board the benefit of your educational background?
Yes, uh, I'm a principal at You have an al? As I was stating, uh, I'm a senior principal at Dynamic Engineering. I graduated, uh, Rutgers University with a Bachelor's of Science in Civil Engineering in two thousand and eleven, and I've been practicing the field of civil engineering since then, so just over thirteen years. In my time, I've, I've worked on various projects, commercial, industrial, residential, uh, including over sixty McDonald's applications. Uh, my license is current in St. New Jersey as of this evening, uh, amongst other states.
Mr. Duarte, I don't know if everyone heard you, but how many McDonald's applications have you worked on?
Over sixty.
Over sixty?
Over sixty.
Thank you. I would ask that Mr. Duarte be accepted as an expert in the field of civil engineering.
I ask you, have you, uh, worked anywhere around here at Mark's?
Aye. Yes, I've actually been before the Morris Plains zoning board on a different application. Uh, but on McDonald's specifically in Morris Plain, I've worked in Montville, Florence Park, um, Montville, Florence.
Have you been accepted as an expert in this?
Yes.
Does anyone have any objections here to? Okay. Very good.
Okay, I'd like to, um, have marked, uh, as exhibit A-one, uh, Mr. Duarte has a presentation, uh, that he has keyed up on the computer, and he also has boards so the Board can see. Can the public see that screen?
No.
All right, I figured, I figured. All right, we need a light down, please, over near the screen. How about that? Okay. Just want to keep everybody happy. All right, Mr. Duarte, you, you prepared, uh, a presentation taking the, that will take the Board through the site?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead and proceed.
What we have up on the screen is an aerial map exhibit. It is very similar, almost identical to the, uh, aerial map that was submitted with the site plan, uh, site plan that was filed with the application. So basically, it outlines the subject site and indicates the two-hundred-foot, um, ring around the property. Uh, as you heard earlier, the site is identified as four fifteen, four thirty-five Speedwell Avenue, also known as Route two oh two, uh, which is a DOT highway. The block is block twenty-three, and the site is blocks four and five. The total lot area is fourth, forty-two thousand four hundred eighty-six square feet, uh, which is just shy of an acre or zero point nine seven six acres, to be exact. The subject site, as, as shown on the screen, uh, is again located on Speedwell Avenue. To the north and south of Speedwell, uh, is a commercial corridor consisting of various commercial uses. To the east, we have residential uses. To the west, we have against Speedwell Avenue with more commercial uses, uh, and residential uses beyond. The subject site, as you also just heard, is developed with two, two different uses currently. Uh, we have the vacant Friendly's restaurant, that's two thousand four hundred nineteen square feet existing today, and we have a multi-tenant office commercial space, uh, to the south of that Friendly's restaurant. Uh, in total, on, on both parcels, there's about sixty parking spaces under existing conditions. The site is accessed
Could you do me a favor? Pull the mic closer and identify where the streets are, so people see all these lines. They can't tell you where Dayton is or where anything else is.
Yeah, so, uh, again, following the cursor, I'm hovering over the Friendly's restaurant currently, and the office building is to the rear of the, uh, westerly property. As I was saying, the, the site's accessed, um, from Speedwell Avenue. Each of the two properties has a one full-movement driveway, and the Friendly's also has a front, full-movement driveway on, on Dayton Road, which is this road to the right of the property.
Okay, Mr. Duarte, just so, uh, everyone is clear, uh, there's a full-movement driveway, you said, currently in the rear of the Friendly's property?
Correct.
Okay, and, and people, and you will hear later, everyone, that that driveway is proposed to become an egress-only, Mr. Duarte, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so it's going from a two-way to a egress-only, correct?
Yes.
Okay, continue.
Now, I'm going to switch over to our
Uh, not everybody talks, engineering. Egress means exit.
So under the proposed conditions, what we are proposing tonight is to remove all existing site features. So both buildings will be removed, any lighting, asphalt, paving, trash enclosure, anything that's on-site today will be removed under the proposed condition for the construction of a three thousand three hundred thirty-six square foot building, uh, for McDonald's restaurant. The building will also have thirty-nine seats interior to, to the building, and I'll go through the site improvements in a few, a few minutes here. So as you also heard earlier, the building is centrally located on the property. We have a front yard setback, front yard being Speedwell Avenue, the primary roadway. We are setback fifty-two feet from the roadway. That is a compliant, um, setback with the ordinance. I'll point out that the existing condition is twenty-two point three feet, which is an existing non-conformity. So we are improving, uh, what's out there today.
Can you just show that with the cursor, please, for everybody?
The existing setback, so
Excuse me, can I ask a question? Is this another exhibit?
Oh, sorry.
No, it's all, all part of the same exhibit.
It is a
Is it all Exhibit A? Because I looked at it, that's different from what's up on
All right, you know what, you're right. Let's follow this one A two.
Okay.
Sorry, go back a little bit. So this is entitled a site plan rendering, and what it is, is a colorized version of the site plan that was submitted with the application. We also superimposed the landscaping. It's a little hard to see on the screen, but, uh, we superimposed the landscaping that is proposed and, and colorized it, again, just to, to give the, uh, proposal some, some color, so it's easy to see what we are proposing. Going back to the front yard setback, that is the measurement from the property line, just about where my cursor is hovering, and that's a straight-line measurement to the nearest building corner. So again, that, that's an increase in twenty-nine point seven feet from what exists today, uh, so we're setting back further from the road. From, from Dayton Road, also considered a front yard, we are proposing fifty-eight point two feet where fifty-four point one feet exists today. So we're increasing that setback from Dayton Road by four point one feet. And that's, again, the roadway is here. The property line is this bold black line where I'm hovering, uh, just to the left of the sidewalk on Long Dayton Road. Next, we have the residential zone setback, so that is a thirty-five-foot requirement, uh, which is just through the trash enclosure here and, and front of the curb line, uh, of this rear parking bank. So the building is setback ninety-six point seven feet from the residential zone. Again, under existing conditions, there's thirty-four point five feet, and that's an existing non-conformity. We are increasing the, the building setback to the residential zone by sixty-two point two feet.
Okay, Mr. Duarte, just so everyone could hear that clearly, so just tell everyone, what is the current, um, zoning ordinance requirement? How many feet, um, must you be from the rear property line to where you have, you start your building?
Thirty-five feet.
Thirty-five feet from the rear property line to where the building starts, and our building is how many feet?
Ninety-six point seven.
Ninety-six point seven feet from the rear property line. So, w- w- fair to say, sir, that we have significantly set the building back from the rear property line?
Yes, absolutely.
Go ahead.
And lastly, we have the side yard, which is to the left on the screen. Currently, there's a building on the lot line, so there's zero foot setback separating the building and the property next door. We're going to go to eighty point six feet in the proposed condition, so again, we're, we're increasing the building setback by eighty point six feet. Access to the site will be provided from Speedwell Avenue, one full-movement driveway, which means right in and right out off of Speedwell Avenue, and one egress-only, just panning down here, uh, off to Dayton Road. The full-movement driveway, which, which again, shown here, uh, is about thirty-one feet from the property line, which is an increase in about four feet from the driveway that exists today. So we're increasing the separation to the property next door, um, and
Tiago, could you just blow that up, please, the, the two-way entrance, so everyone can get a good, good look at it?
Sure. Okay, thank you. So panning back down to the Dayton Road driveway. Again, this is egress-only, so you can only exit the site from this driveway. We are proposing this driveway about forty-five feet from the property line to the south, which is the, the property line separating lot six and our subject site. That's, that setback is increasing thirteen feet, so it's getting thirteen feet further from the residential property, um, and closer to Speedwell Avenue. So we're improving the, the traffic setback from, from the property to the south, uh, east, sorry.
Now, Mr. Duarte, would, um, when you're exiting the site, uh, in the rear onto Dayton Road, uh, will you be able to make a right turn out of that exit?
No, we, we will, we will restrict the egress movements to left only.
So left turn only out of that exit, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
And that is, uh, in response to some of the comments that were provided by the Board of Professionals. So the applicant has agreed to restrict that movement there to prevent anyone from making a, or to, to discourage and make it harder and illegal for someone to make a right turn out of Dayton Road, onto Dayton Road.
People will be using that, it'll be people It looks like the people who will be using it will, will make, people that'll be going inside to sit down. If I'm looking at the drawing from this, so that cars that are parked on the left side and at the bottom would have access to Dayton Road. Anything above that exit will be going out onto Speedwell?
That's correct, that's how we designed it.
But the predominant use of this building is basically going to be drive-through, right? You have limited seating?
Yes, correct.
Is it really necessary to have access onto Dayton?
It is, and I'll, I'll get to it. It is necessary to have access to Dayton.
How are you going to control people not making the right-hand turn coming out of Dayton?
So, so again, in response to the, the comments that we've received, we will agree to revise this driveway. So the way it is shown currently is hitting Dayton Road in a perpendicular fashion, so it's almost ninety degrees. We can revise this to angle the driveway, which will make it more difficult for anyone who wants to adamantly make that right out. So we can implement, you know, full-height curbs and other traffic measures to, to force traffic to make that right out of the site, in addition to the signage and everything.
Well, it strikes me, you're just creating a bottleneck, because now you've got traffic coming out of your main entrance, where you have your entrance and exit. Now you're going to jump out onto Dayton Road, so it's possible to have multiple cars trying to exit the main entrance off of Speedwell, plus off of Dayton Road, in a, in a situation where we already have bottleneck on that road.
Well, yes, I was, I'll add that currently, there's two driveways on Speedwell, so we're reducing the number of cars making that maneuver. So right now, you'd have three cars from this property alone, or from this property and the intersection of Dayton, making that left or right turn on Speedwell, and we're reducing that down to two, um, cars by limiting the on-site driveways to one and getting the intersection.
Well, I appreciate your technical information, but we're also dealing, dealing with human nature, and it strikes me as that I don't see how it quite is going to work personally.
So we're going to, um, of course, revise our plan, and we can show you, um, because you're not looking at the, the revision, but it's quite common to have a road jog to the side, because you would have to almost jump over a curb and ruin your car to make a right. Now, if you think people are going to do that, I mean, if they're dumb enough to do that, then all right. You think so, huh? You think so? All right.
Okay, there's the entrance and exit
I'm going to open up a spare tire shop, then.
If I, if I can speak, um, I, I understand everybody's interested in you dis, you, there may be some disagreement with something being said and some agreement with others, but really, in order to keep a record, please, I, I know it's difficult, please, known with the applause or the response, it, it makes it a difficult record. Um, I, I'm sure the Board is going to make a, the correct decision. Sometimes these things get appealed by either side, and if there's not a clean record, um, the court will, will lean in favor of an applicant if the municipality can't make a clean record. Um, and, and just so, so the Board here gets to hear everybody, just, I, I know it's difficult, they're all volunteers. Please allow everybody to speak.
Do you consider possibly making the entrance and exit off of Speedwell a bigger, wider exit, so that you don't need the exit off of Dayton? Is that a possibility?
Anything's possible, but we'd like you to see what we have proposed, um, for the Dayton exit first.
Moving on to off-street parking. The proposal is calling for thirty parking spaces, and once we add in the credit, which, so thirty spaces includes the ADA parking and the EV chargers, which are located here, there, the ADA is that one, is the, the blue symbol, and two EV spaces below that, these white symbols indicate the EV parking spaces. Once we add in the state, uh, EV credit, our total on s, off-street parking comes to thirty-two spaces. There, yes, there are designated spaces on the
To be on the Dayton side, correct?
On the, on the north side, that'll be, that are designated, right, for the drive-through
So that's, but those six parking spots aren't, aren't included. You're including it at thirty, but those aren't designated parking for people going in to sit down, correct?
That's correct, but i- i- in this case, those six spaces are, are on the least desirable side of the building. Uh, I'd say that the people who would be using those spaces would be parking anywhere on-site anyway, so that, by, just by designing them doesn't mean they're being removed from the total parking count.
And, and how many applicants do, can dine in there at one time?
There, there's thirty-nine seats in the, in the building.
So if everybody had a car, there's not enough parking?
Correct, i- if everyone was to drive in and park there.
And, um, what about the staff? How many staff will be at any given time?
Typically, it's, it's ten to fifteen staff, depending on how busy it is or big hours.
Where and at what point?
Traditionally, staff, either it takes public transportation, they're dropped off, they carpool, sometimes, uh,
Hey, but what happens if you give staff until over thirty, and they all drop? Where do they work?
So, just on the parking, the, the ITV standard, so the traffic trip generation models, the parking meets that requirement. So on the thirty-nine seats, the requirement in the So on the thirty-nine seats, the requirement in the Morris Plains is one space for two and a half seats, which in this case would equal sixteen spaces are required. So we have double that. On the area count, which is one space per seventy-five square feet, that's where the parking does not comply with. Forty-one spaces are required with that calculation of the building area. Thirty is sufficient based on the number of seats, and in my experience and projects that I've done with McDonald's, thirty is more than enough. I've got a few projects with larger buildings that had less parking, so less than twenty spaces. And there, again, the McDonald's model and just the nature of the industry is more people in the drive-through. And we'll get into this with the track engineer, but the track entering the site, about two-thirds of that, so sixty-seven percent, are using the drive-through and they're not parking and going into the store. And that's an increase from prior COVID, where we still have projects and sites that were more dependent on parking. But now, the majority of the traffic entering the site is really going in that drive-through. That's why you have the two lanes and the two order points, is to keep that efficiency up while the.
However, those two lanes are going to get into one lane.
They're.
So I get the two lanes coming in, but you only got one lane going out. And my other question is deliveries. When will deliveries come? And I can only assume they'd be after hours, because if an eighteen-wheeler comes in that parking lot during business hours, I just think it's going to be a big problem.
So on deliveries, McDonald's rarely has a designated loading space. That is because the deliveries are made during off-peak hours, and off-peak between the morning rush and the lunch rush, or the lunch rush and the dinner rush, just to avoid, you know, when the site is the busiest, having a truck on site. The deliveries tend to take between thirty and forty-five minutes, so the truck is really not there for a grand, a big chunk of time. They tend to drop the product being delivered, and in this case, everything's palletized, so it's really, you open up the truck trailer, you drop everything on site, and it gets pushed to the building. So the delivery operation is actually pretty quick, so to limit that impact to the site, and again, it's, the majority of McDonald's I've worked on have not had a designated loading space, and the function is not impacted based on that condition.
Can I just ask you a follow-up question?
Yes.
The example that was used, that there's thirty-nine seats, so what if everyone came at once? I mean, everyone would have to be in their own car, so you'd have to have thirty-nine single people all showing up with no kids, no grandma, no one else in the car. Have you ever seen that in your career?
No, I've not.
Okay, thanks.
I'm on Speedwell Avenue. I turn into your facility. Go through how this is going to operate. Show me.
So car traveling on Speedwell, and that's the road at the top of the page here. Access the property from the ingress in only ingress driveway, it's a full movement driveway. If the customer's going to park, there's parking. There's parking along the south, north, and east property lines, so there's, around the perimeter, there's parking. So if the customer's going to park, they'll pick one of the spaces that are open and walk into the store. The customer service areas are, we use this tan color to highlight the canopy over the customer service area. So that highlights where, you know, the main doors are and the access to the inside restaurant and lobby area. Anyone who's traveling into the drive-through lane and not parking on site, they can enter this concrete pad area, and again, there's two lanes here. Each of those lanes leads to its own order canopy, menu board, and pre-browse board. The staff in the building will take your order, and they will then direct the customer to proceed forward. So the cars will wait at these two points, and this different tan color is the overhead canopy. Just maybe I'll zoom in on that, make it a little clearer.
Is there a clear path for the people that park as how they're going to enter into the building? Or just do they wander randomly across the driveway or asphalt and get to the entrance?
I'll touch upon that in architecture, but the entrance points are all accented, so there's a clear destination if you are walking in the parking area. And there is sidewalk all around the building, so there's somewhere for pedestrians to walk once they reach adjacent to the building. So going back to this, these two different color tan areas are the overhead canopies, and that's where the cars in the drive-through place their order. Again, the staff inside the building will dictate who goes first, in the event that there are two cars that are placing the order at the same time, so that they do not merge forward until they are told to do so, and that's how the staff controls the drive-through. The cars will then continue counterclockwise around the building, and then there's three more, there's canopies over the, we call this the drive-through side of the building, this northernly side of the building. One is the pay window, so if you place an order, you pay there, then are told to proceed to the pickup window. The main pickup window is the middle window on the building. If, for whatever reason, your order's larger and it's taking a little bit longer, they may tell you, proceed to the third window, which is the one closest to the corner of the building. And that's an area where you either wait for your order to be ready. Intent there being, the smaller orders can continue to go to the second window, so that you're not backing up the drive-through. Once you've completed your transaction, you've got your food and your fries, and you're happy with your purchase, you can proceed to the exit and back to Speedwell Avenue. And just touching again upon the third window for the larger orders, two of these spaces on the, to the right of the drive-through lane are designated pull-forward spaces, and they have the same intent. So say, three large orders come in at the same time. The traffic in the drive-through continues to function by being able to pull those cars out of the lane. To answer the question of what happens if there's, you know, it's very busy, the intent is to keep the drive-through moving, to keep its efficiency. What tends to happen if you see the long line at a store, you might not stop there. That's the drive of the drive-through and keeping it efficient.
Why is that gray spot on the right that sticks out?
This gray spot here, that's the grease trap for the building. It requires a grease trap for the. Grease trap. It is part of, I'll touch upon it when I get to the sanitary system. It is a below-ground system, and it's got a concrete. It's a concrete pad, which is why it's shown different from the pavement around it.
Okay, and let me just, so everyone can hear, Tiago, you said that that is a grease trap that's below ground?
Correct.
Okay, and let me just add follow-up on the description that you just gave of the flow around this restaurant. Mr. Duarte, is there anything remarkable or different about how this design, how this has been designed? And, you know, any other McDonald's that you've designed that's state-of-the-art and efficient?
No, this is a standard McDonald's layout. As the company that pretty much invented the drive-through, they've got very specific requirements for designing and laying out drivethrus. There's a handful of different options that we can really go with to make it fit on a specific site. But the layout that's presented here is a very typical layout, and typical of even their remodels. Basically, any existing store that's got a single drive-through currently, there's been a nationwide push to get those modernized, to have this side-by-side layout, or a similar side-by-side layout, to, again, further the brand, the branding requirements, but also to increase the efficiency at those other well-performing stores that really need an extra efficiency bump in the drive-through and help process. So, yes, it is a standard layout.
And is the result, I assume, of a lot of research, a lot of trial and error, and years of design and redesign and how these things can be efficient, correct?
It is certainly an evolution, yes.
I have a follow-up to Mr. Besse's question. You can hear me or not. Regarding the deliveries, understanding that there's no dedicated spot for the trucks when they come in to drop off the deliveries. Can you explain what happens and where the deliveries are taken in, and if, in fact, that would impede any of the traffic flow? She said, I think it takes about a half hour to unload.
Sure.
Thank you.
So when the truck pulls in off of Speedwell Avenue, they will stage, if these spaces are open, they can pull into the ten parking spaces. Otherwise, they can stop in this drive aisle. It's eighteen-foot wide, so it is wide enough for a truck to stop there and still maintain a open travel path for anyone who's not going into the drive-through lane. The drive-through, so everything's shown in this beige, the concrete area, that does not get any overlap of truck or anything of that nature. So the truck stays completely out of the drive-through to maintain its operational capacity when it's, during a delivery operation. And then the loading doors are located. See here, these black lines indicate the door swings, so there's two loading doors at the rear of the building, the back of the house, furthest from the customer service areas. And basically, truck will be here, the pallets will be wheeled across the sidewalk, and then into one of the two doors, depending on what it is.
When you did your traffic study, did you come across a situation where your drive-through would be backed up, would be full? And you had multiple cars out on Speedwell Avenue in both directions waiting to come in? Did that occur?
We'd like to direct that to our traffic expert.
For me?
We'd like our traffic expert to answer that, okay? Thank you.
Only because the page that you have in your plan shows your traffic trail. And it truly looks like it's blocking the flow. And if it's blocking the flow for a half hour, I can't even imagine what Speedwell Avenue would be like.
Yeah, so I have a colorized version of what was submitted with the plan, so this will be A.
Page C-18.
This is, yeah, so A3 Vehicle Circulation Exhibit. So it is a colorized version of what's in the site plan application package at C-18. So this shows, this is the delivery truck, and it's just highlighted yellow for, just so it stands out so we can all see it. So again, the delivery truck would be parked in this area. This just shows, it's a wider path, because it's showing that the truck wheelbase and the area the truck needs to maneuver through the site. But when it is parked, it is only taking up basically this area, because it's pulling you straight, it's a regular track and trail.
So what you're saying, if it's parked there, and there's cars parked in all those parking spaces, other cars will be still be able to get through? It just seems like a very tight spot.
So the lane is eighteen feet between the parking space and the drive-through lane. So you could, there's enough room to provide a car to get through if there's a truck there.
And people park in those spots?
Yes, this is with the tractor-trailer staying outside of the parking spaces.
And Mr. Duarte, is this how the typical McDonald's operates, their loading?
It is, yes.
Okay, and in your experience, had any major issues with cars getting blocked?
No, again, the intent is for the truck to come during off-peak hours to minimize any impact on site. Going to go back to the rendering, just to finish up on the parking. The township requires parking spaces be ten feet by twenty feet. We are proposing nine feet by eighteen, and as an industry standard, nine by eighteen is certainly sufficient for off-street parking areas. But the benefit also of this layout is that the parking is provided along the perimeter, so there is an area for cars to overhang. If we need the additional room, if there's a longer vehicle, they can overhang into the grass area. But that is a waiver that is being requested. And similarly, on loading, that's also a waiver that's being requested, where one loading area, one designated loading berth is required, but we are not proposing one. Moving on to site lighting. We're proposing.
I have another question. What would you have to do to comply with the amount of required parking? Would you have to reduce the size of the building? Why aren't your, it seems like you're not coming close to the number of parking slots that we require. And you keep referring to McDonald's standards, but this town has its own standards. We established a number of parking requires, I'm assuming, based on information that we had, that would be required for people who would be normally coming to a sit-down restaurant.
Sure, we could look to reduce the green area on site, and possibly provide more parking that way. We could look to reduce the building area and meet the standard that way, so we maintain the same number of parking spaces, but reduce our footprint as another way of accomplishing that. But again, the standard, it's not only the township, I don't know, it is the town standard, but the ITD, which provides recommendations for parking general, parking provided for a certain specific use. We are complying with that industry-wide standard. In my experience, I have not worked on a McDonald's that had forty parking spaces.
Oh, would it be safe to say that your business plan is building predicated on the fact that you're looking forward to a drive-through business and not a sit-down? Is that what you're looking for?
The traffic penetrates the site, yes. Two-thirds are going to that drive-through and not into the store.
Program will actually add to our traffic problem, so your format, it goes against kind of what we're looking for.
It is a primitive.
We will certainly have testimony in this case, Mr. Kelly, that the world has changed for these restaurants dramatically since COVID, and even before COVID. It's as much as three-quarters of people arriving at these restaurants do not stay. So we can create fanciful parking spaces that will never be used, or you can rely on the data, and you'll hear from our experts, that these are drive-up, it's not just us, I mean, McDonald's isn't encouraging it, that's what people want now. They want to, I mean, go to Starbucks, there's like thirty cups lined up in the front. People come in, they grab, they go, they grab, they go, they don't go and sit. So our expert is relying on the data of what we're proposing here. If we were proposing a sit-down restaurant, that, you know, we knew people would come in and spend two hours, and there's plenty of those restaurants. We, of course, would have at least meet the standard parking, and we'd have more parking. But these restaurants do not operate that way. I'm the attorney, so I'm not testifying, but I'm just telling you, what we're going to have in the record is that for these types of establishments, it's a pickup, drop-off, drive-in, business now.
I understand what you're saying, but what I'm saying to you, though, is that road basically goes back to what was horse and buggy. The only improvement that's made to that road is instead of a dirt road, it's a paved road. The original format for McDonald's Burger King Lollapalooza was highway, so you get off on the highway, get a quick meal, and back on the road. What you're saying, and I'm not sure I agree with the number of people who are here, is you're saying this is what people want. I'm not sure that's what this sounds like.
Well, I'm talking about the parking, which is what we were speaking about, not whether people want it or not. That's not for me to judge.
Sorry about that. I want to ask about the EV parking spaces. Are they EV-ready? Or are they actually set up for people to charge their car when they park there?
They are EV-ready.
They're EV-ready, so those spaces could be utilized by other people parking because they are not specific for EV charging at the time?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Duarte, just a couple of questions that I have, and this is going back to the driveway on Dayton. That driveway is not, is proposed to be moved, you said twelve or thirteen feet? That driveway is not, is proposed to be moved, you said twelve or thirteen feet, uh, towards Speedwell Avenue?
Yes, it's thirteen feet further, well, closer to Speedwell than the existing driveway.
Okay. Does the exit of that driveway without the right-hand, uh, change, does that point directly at a, at a residence, or is it, is it far enough down towards the, towards the bank?
Sorry, can you repeat that?
So that exit, the way that it is right now, does that face a residence property? Is that directly across from a residential property?
Just pull up the aerial here. So, I'll zoom in a little bit. So this is the existing driveway. By moving it thirteen feet further up Dayton Road, we're gonna take the cursor and go about halfway, assuming that that existing driveway is twenty-four feet. So yes, when we move it up, it is not facing the, the residence across the street, so that is an improvement from the condition that exists today.
And would it interfere with that residential driveway?
No.
What would be the proposed width of the exit that you would be willing to change it to?
We wouldn't change the width, so we have it as eighteen feet, uh, twenty feet currently. We would look to maintain that, we would just directionalize it so that it's not hitting the road at a ninety-degree angle, we would look to hit it at a shallow angle, so that...
If you were to angle that, say the, the lower side, you'd still, you'd have to compensate for going towards Speedwell as well, correct?
Yes, so it would increase from the thirteen, possibly fourteen or fifteen, we'd have to look at it, but it would increase the separation from what's out there today.
Yeah, it's clearly an issue, so we're gonna look at various options to see which is best. So we'll, we'll look at it, we'll try and make it work. We understand now that that's, that's something that everyone's concerned about.
So just moving on to site lighting, we're, we're proposing all new LED fixtures for illumination of the site. There's nine total fixtures proposed, and they're scattered along the perimeter of the parking area. The light levels, they range on-site, but again, there was comments from the board professionals about lowering some of those light levels in the... in the, uh, in the paved parking area, so we are going to revisit the lighting to, to reduce those levels where we can. Uh, I will add that the light levels along the property lines, uh, to the east and south, so the property lines adjacent to other, other sites and other uses, uh, those are currently zero point zero foot candles or zero point two foot candles, it ranges from those, those minimums, uh, and then does not account for any landscaping that exists and the rear fence line that we're proposing. So effectively, there's, there's no spillage onto the properties to the south and to the east. Uh, there is a little bit of spillage on the Speedwell side and the Dayton side, but again, that's, that helps from the perspective that there's pedestrian sidewalks in those areas. Touching upon the proposed landscaping, so we are proposing a, a planted, um, buffer along the eastern property line. So this... So the rear of this property actually has a twenty-five-foot wide sewer easement running through it, and that's basically from the curb line that's shown, um, adjacent to the parking area, uh, all the way to the property line. So this twenty-five-foot strip of land is where there's an existing sewer line that runs through it. Uh, we're planting to the east of that sewer line, again, we don't wanna disturb the town facilities, so the sewer line that's there is gonna remain, but we are gonna enhance the landscaping that's on, by providing trees, uh, evergreen trees and, and deciduous trees. In total, this site will provide seven shade trees, two ornamental trees, we're proposing thirty evergreen trees, and then thirty-six, uh, evergreen shrubs. The main focus being that the residential buffer to the east, then we also have landscaping within the green areas between the drive-through and along the frontage of the store and along the frontages of Speedwell Avenue for, for screening up the parking area from the...
Is the landscaping, would be dense enough to keep car lights from shining on those houses, or that house that would be directly adjacent to that?
Yes, it will. And again, we are proposing an eight-foot tall fence along the entire property line.
What kind of fence?
A solid vinyl fence.
To be solid?
Solid vinyl, yes.
And how high?
Eight feet.
Eight feet?
And that is, again, that's a variance, but we are requesting that to go higher than the allowable six-foot, again, to provide additional screening, uh, between our proposed use and the, the residence to the east.
Can I just go back to lighting a minute? I didn't know you were finished with that. Um, are these directional lights that you're using, uh, in, towards the interior?
Yes, so the LEDs versus, you know, the prior incandescent and metal halide bulbs allow us to directionalize it a lot more. It being, it allows us to directionalize the lighting intensities and really direct it where we want it to shine, so that there's limited spillage. So they are directional, they only base and point and shoot towards the, the subject site. Uh, and more specifically, just our focus is that paved area, the parking area for, for safety of people who do park and of the drive-through, so that there's visibility on it.
Would the lighting affect any second store, storing residential or commercial buildings in the area?
No, so all of the lights are fifteen-foot height, so it's, and they're all down, downward-facing. There's no angle like a floodlight, so it's all downward-facing lights.
And what about the putting lights on a timer to dim the whole area, uh, when not in use? I understand, you know, for security and safety reasons, you're gonna need something, but would you be willing also to dim those lights on a timer somehow, uh, when not being used?
Yes, definitely. We would agree to that. Moving on to utilities and stormwater management, so the, from stormwater perspective, the site currently is developed...
Wait a minute, you, you done with the buffer?
Yes.
Okay, well, I got, I got some suggestions for you. First, behind the office building there, and not the, not panelies, there's some big trees, you're not removing them, are you?
We are preserving them, those are actually located in the, uh, in the easement area, so...
You're not removing them?
No.
Oh, good. I, I, but I think you should, I, I suggest that you have either a three- or four-foot berm, that you plant white, uh, white, uh, fir tree, I don't know where I went exactly, white pine trees, six to eight feet, a lot of them, because if you ask me, uh, your planting is sparse at best. Uh, and, you know, those trees you're planting, a lot of them in the winter, the leaves leave, so, uh, they wanna be buffered, you need a lot of, of planting, triple what you got. And you should consider a berm. And if you wanna look at something, go look at, uh, at a quick check next to them, right next to that house.
We'll come back with a revised landscape plan.
Back to, back to stormwater. Uh, the existing site, so the, from a stormwater perspective, the site currently has thirty thousand nine hundred twenty-three square feet of impervious coverage. We are reducing that by two thousand five hundred thirty-three square feet, so we're, we're reducing our impervious coverage on-site, and that alone reduces our, our peak runoffs for all of the, the standard New Jersey design storms. So we're reducing the two-year by point three CFS, the ten-year by zero point four CFS, and the hundred-year by zero point six-nine CFS. So it's, it's an improvement to the condition, the stormwater condition currently. And from, again, there was some comments from the board engineer regarding including a, a perforated pipe system to further enhance the stormwater management. Uh, we'll, we'll certainly look to implement that as well to further reduce those runoff rates. So basically, without do, we, we have various inlet and, um, stormpipes proposed that capture the runoff generated by the site and discharge it out to Speedwell Avenue, which is very similar to, to how both sites operate today. But in addition to the pipe that we're proposing, we're gonna make those perforated, uh, which basically allows stormwater to infiltrate into the subsoil, uh, reducing the stormwater runoff that's leaving the site and into the D O T system. As far as utilities, there'll be all new utilities to the building, we'll have a new water line to, domestic water to the building, new sanitarium sewer, and what I said earlier is this rectangular area adjacent to the drive-through lane, that is a underground grease trap. Basically, the effluent that leaves the building will have bathroom and, uh, bathroom discharge, that'll bypass this grease trap. Anything leaving the kitchen will first go into a grease trap. The, the purpose of that is to try to prevent any, any grease from making its way into the public sewer system. So this grease trap is a fifteen hundred, sorry, twelve hundred gallon capacity, and that'll basically capture any grease that would otherwise be leaving the building, and it's regularly serviced, um, to, to remove that. And once the kitchen waste goes through the grease trap, it then, uh, then it's connected, sorry, is connected to the, the bathroom lines, and then basically there's only one lateral leaving the site, um, under proposed conditions. Electric, same story, we'll, we'll work with the electric provider to provide a, a new electric service to the building. We, we envision that being at the rear of the site. There's a small transformer fired, uh, just to the south of the rear door. And similar with, with gas, we'll work with the, the provider to get gas installed to the rear of the site. If there's no questions on that, I'll move to the building design. Just introduce that to A4. Yes, this is A4.
Have that marked as A4, please.
This is the colorized elevations of the, the building. The, so what I have up on the screen shows the, the four sides of the building, the front being what runs on Speedwell Avenue, so you have glazing, uh, basically the bulk of the front of house is, is the customer service area, the ordering lobby, the bathrooms, uh, the order counter, the tables. That's all outlined, uh, with, with glass, and carries through on this non-drive-through side, so this is the side facing the main parking area where the ADA parking and EV spaces are. Again, here are the two loading doors just to the right of those main, um, the main entrance, and then the rear of the building is just the rear door, and you see the drive-through on the right side, and the last elevation is the drive-through side elevation, that's the north side of the building, the three windows. Uh, again, the first window will be the pay window, and then the two pickup windows beyond that. As for materials, the, the bulk of the building is a hardened plank siding, it's a fiber and cement material. These are, these brand, uh, accent walls at the corners, basically highlighting those customer service areas. That's a, a wood battening system, um, and they're also outlined with a white aluminum trellis, basically to, to outline the area where the customer, uh, would enter the store. So you got the door, uh, on the non-drive-through side and on the, the front of the building. To, to touch upon the, just the operations, um, specifically the performance standards, I wanna just bring attention to that. So the odors are, are definitely something that we understand the board had concerns about, and professionals as well. So McDonald's is proposing their, um, complies with the performance standards, but it basically goes above and beyond. So what they're proposing is an air scrubber, so odors that leave the, the store typically is just a, a filter, a high-performance or a high-efficiency filter. That's, that's one stage of it. This store will implement, uh, above that, above and beyond what the typical store has, so that introduces two additional filtering stages. One is an electric static mechanism which removes smoke from, from the exhaust system. And there also is a UV component that has a chemical reaction with any grease that would be in that exhaust, uh, air, to, again, further reduce that, and as Frank opened, um, total grease, you know, odors and emissions are basically ninety percent reduced before they are discharged from the, the kitchen equipment. That's equivalent to the system that we, uh, that was approved and included at the Chick-fil-A and the, and the Chipotle in town. Uh, when we met with the board professionals prior to submitting that application, that was one of the comments, to basically match the system that was used at those two locations, and McDonald's has agreed to, to provide that, um, to address the, the odor and smoke concerns from the kitchen. All the other performance standards are met regarding, um, the liquid waste, solid waste, noise, vibration, flare, all of the proposed standards are, are gonna be below the D E P regulations for, for that. And actually going back to our site plan rendering here, again, to specifically talk about the noise.
Can I just ask you one question about the, uh, the exhaust? Where would that stack be on that building?
So in the elevation, you wouldn't be able to see it. There's a four-foot parapet that runs, that's basically around the perimeter of the building, so it's gonna be behind that parapet and screened from, from view.
Yeah, but in, in relative where? The middle of the building, the rear?
Yes, it'd be, it'd be on the roof and in the middle of the building.
Where?
The middle of the building.
Put the hand in the middle. There you go.
I'll actually, I'll go to the second one. So it'd be basically where the M McDonald's arches are, and it would run, um, down the building on the long side.
And does it only run when the, the restaurant is open?
Yes, yeah. So go, going back to the drive-through, the, there's two speakers in the, the drive-through equipment, and they are located in the canopies, so that's the, the tan, the alternate tan color in the drive-through lanes. And the sound levels, they adjust to ambient condition. So what that means is during the day, when there's more traffic on the roadway or in the immediate area, that'll hit, it's, it's, that'll have a, a set volume. At night, when there's less traffic, and less ambient noise, it'd be diminished to a lower level. It basically, where are they started located? So we got about fifty feet to the property next door, or a hundred and one feet to the east, which would be the residential property line. At both of those locations, the sound levels are effectively below twenty decibels, and twenty decibels is basically quieter than a library. And that's just a function of, one, where it's situated, again, our, our design intent was to put everything in the middle of the site where all the activity is happening, um, keep that as far away from the adjacent properties as we can, and the system that's being proposed for, for the, the sounds and the speakers in the system and the, the drive-through will not only meet the D E P standards, which is fifty decibels at the property line for nighttime, um, and again, we're gonna be at twenty, so less than half of what the D E P allows is proposed here. Going back to the elevations, just to talk about signage. We have four building signs proposed. The plan, as submitted, called for five. There was one at the rear, um, an M logo at the rear facade that was removed, so we are looking for four, um, building signs. There's an M logo on the front, again, that's facing Speedwell Avenue, and that's fourteen square feet. And then you have another M Arches logo facing the parking area, fourteen square feet, and then two word marks, one is on the non-drive-through side, again, that's the southern face of the building, and one on the drive-through side, which faces Dayton Road. Those are two word marks, each of those are thirty-two point eight square feet. The, the, there is a variance for these. There is a variance for these, the two on the non-drive-through side. The ordinance allows one sign per wall facing the public right, right of way. The non-drive-through side faces the parking area, but does accent the, the building entrances, so we find that those signs are required and help, again, carry that branding and also the customer service wayfinding. The sign area for the M logos complies with the ordinance, but the requirement for the word marks, so we've got, again, thirty-two point eight square feet for each of those word marks, the McDonald's words, where thirty point four is permitted, so it's a variance for the sign area, and those are our standard McDonald's signs, so there's just no, that's what's.
So you eliminated the one on the rear, right?
The one facing the residential property.
Okay, why do you need the McDonald's on that side? Because if you're coming on Speedwell, you're not, your, your building's so far back, you're not going to see McDonald's. You're not going to see it.
We'll get rid of it.
Yep. So we reduce it to three buildings, that's one of each, so we eliminate the, the variance for having, well, there'll be a variance because it's not a street, street side, but there'd be three total proposed, or we have four. So we drop from five to, to three.
Are our posts lit?
They're intern, internally illuminated, yes.
Is there a pole or any signage on a pole?
Going back to our site plan rendering, there is a four-by-four monument sign located near the intersection between Dayton and Speedwell, so that does comply with the area requirements and the height requirements, where seven feet is permitted, and that sign is four-by-four on a three-foot base. And the intent for the, the base is to match the building architecture and the colors.
So you're getting rid of that tall sign?
No, no tall signs, no.
Okay.
There is an additional variance for the number of freestanding signs. The, the ordinance defines the menu boards as S I Ns, but it's really not advertising anything, it's really just a function of the drive-through. And we have, again, there's two pre-browsed boards, one for each lane, and two menu boards, one for each lane.
Are those boards dimmed or turned off after hours?
They are, yes. And similar to the, the sound levels, the lighting in the digital menu boards is, is automatically dimming with ambient condition, so it's not too bright at night.
I still think you have more than enough signs, you don't need that one.
The, which one?
The one that big McDonald's is way back, you never see it from Speedwell.
Oh, we're going to get rid of it. We're going to remove it out of it. Yeah.
Good. Thank you.
Going back to the rendering for a second, just to mention, the refuse area that we're proposing is located on the southeast corner of the site, so it's this twenty-by-thirty area, it's a mezzanero trash enclosure, so it's cement block, and the finish does match the building, and we agree, we do agree to have a brick veneer that'll match the building. That was one of the comments also from the board professionals, so we agree to do that. And this structure is set back twenty-six feet from the residential property to the east, and twenty-three point four feet to the south, so that's the, the adjacent commercial property to the south. We selected this location wanting to be further from adjacent properties, but also to be a solid structure that can contain the garbage dumpsters and not be out of the way, not be in the way of, of site traffic. So when the tra, truck, trash truck comes on site, they're easily able to drive into the enclosures and pull the trash out and then continue on their way and exit the site.
Just with the enclosure, we have problems in other areas of town where the applicant says, yeah, the garbage won't come until seven, seven-thirty, eight o'clock, whatever, and here they are, three-thirty, three o'clock, four o'clock in the morning. Is there anything that you can look at to secure the doors so that no truck can take any garbage out of there before set ordinance in the borough?
Yes, absolutely, we can have a locking unit that'll run that.
But not a locking, it's something that's timed, so at seven o'clock, that's the earliest a truck can get in there, no matter what, because we have trucks coming in to other areas of town. Unlock the lock, do what they gotta do, three, four, five o'clock in the morning, and then they, then they're out of there. If there's a noise complaint, by the time it gets called in, the police get there, nine times out of ten, the trucks are gone, so it's a automatic locking mechanism timed so that it can't be accessed before or after the ord, whatever the ordinance says.
Yeah, we can absolutely implement something like that.
And the doors are locked? The doors to the trash enclosure?
Yes, they, they latch, and, and yes, we'll look at mechanisms to have a timed locking Just touching upon some, some of the waivers that we're seeking, so there's a twenty-five foot radius intersection requirement, so that would be the intersection with Dayton and Speedwell Avenue. We're, we're not touching this area, so we're not proposing to, to change that, so we are requesting a waiver. If we were to provide a twenty-five foot radius here, it would actually hold the curb line in and take away sidewalk areas, so that's why we prefer to maintain the sidewalk radius, sidewalk and curb radius that exists today. The, there is a site triangle easement, that's this, for those who can't see, that's that grade triangle. It just clips the, the property line, so there will be an easement for, for site, site triangle easement there. Basically, what that prevents is construction of anything in that area that would limit the visibility for cars making turns onto, onto or from Dayton Road. There's also the waiver for hairpin striping, we won't request that, we will provide hairpin striping for the parking area. Similarly, for the, the granite block curb, we will provide that instead of seeking the waiver.
Okay, so just so everyone got that, we're not seeking the waiver for the striping anymore, and we're also dropping our request for a waiver on the block. Say it again, Jim.
Correct. The granite block curb, we'll be providing.
We're going to provide the granite block curb.
Madam Chair, question for Mr. Duarte, what did, what was your dis?
Hold on, can you get the mic? Okay.
How did you leave the site triangle easing waiver?
Not seeking waiver, we're going to provide easement.
Thank you. That's all you have?
Liz, do you have any questions?
I do, Ms. Park.
Yeah.
That's all I had on that issue.
Oh, do you have more?
Well, when, when Mr. Duarte's testimony, I have to make sure he touched on only, I didn't say my four.
I don't think that mic is working, or maybe you need to be closer to it.
Right on it.
Okay.
Madam Chair, is there any going to take a five-minute break, or am I going to get tackled up here by the crowd?
I think a five, we'll just, we'll just come back at nine fifteen, how's that? Give you more than five.
Yes, please, thank you.
Check, check.
I'm having a very difficult time by this meeting, and I'm just believing how much of understanding are related to our, our, and most of our, so, you know, issues talking about the work, and, and, I think I'm going to write a letter, a, a, a letter to the others that you work, but, but, I know, and, and I, 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 to make a remark, I want to mention that you are here, and that we have a, a, a damn people body, and, and, I get a, a, now, I assume you know of this project?
Of course.
The brothers, the brothers. So I'm really, I, I have, I'm wearing brat green because I'm a, a, so we're probably opposite sides, but I still like, I still like to, you know.
Oh, that's me, maybe.
What, what makes you say you're the green one?
Oh, here's, uh, New York Times, and, and, it's on a front page of, or, you know, one of those sections, and it was, it was, it was, which is the green, brat, and the word brat, R I T, and then I wanted to explain how a record of the least, this rock, and she, and so, and, and so, I'm now, you know, the, the, the collection, the results are highlights, this is my color, and if she's not, to the class, you have to wear black, and, 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 and,
Yes.
Depending on the shift, sorry.
Three shifts? Fifteen, ten to fifteen employees shifts? Or different? You have Oh, okay. So sorry. Go ahead.
So just ten to fifteen on the maximum shift. So whichever the busiest peak hour the restaurant is, the maximum number would be between that range. Typically, it's ten on the regular shifts. As far as the hours of operation, the applicant is seeking four a.m. to midnight for the drive-through and lobby. So we receive average operation that are being sought are four a.m. to midnight.
Excuse me. I just could ask if everybody tried to follow the ground rules. When you do that, we're not going to have a record and it's difficult. I understand you're going to have a chance to ask questions about any of the testimony that's on. But please allow it to go on and we can make a record with the transcriber and the recording. Thanks.
So just to give some more context there, the that is what the applicant is seeking. And we did some research in Duncan next door. So immediately to the south of the property has similar hours. So that is, you know, the reasoning and the thought process there.
Well, Mr. Duarte, they have the same hours. Is that correct?
The same hours, yes.
Four to midnight. Duncan Donuts right next door.
Correct.
Thank you.
Deliveries. The deliveries. So we touched upon the truck and how that works. Typically, depending on how busy the store is, deliveries would happen twice a week. And again, that would be thirty to forty-five minutes each occurrence. Trash and recycling, that's again located in trash enclosure to the corner of the property. That would also be two times a week. Do agree with the timed aid and having a locking mechanism there. And the intent for the selected trash pickup vendor would be somebody who comes in during the non-peak hours, but during the daytime, so between the rushes of the breakfast and lunch, lunch and dinner, between one of those. That's the operations and then just want to go through. Sure.
As far as operations, what about the grease truck? Doesn't that get dumped?
There's a service that comes in and pumps it out as needed. That usually is once every two months for a store this size. It really depends on the volume. But typically their size so that they don't have to be serviced, you know, every week. Definitely never be serviced that frequently. So it's usually every other month. Going through the, just want to touch upon some of the comments in the professional members. Make sure everything. I'm going to start with Mr. Ryden's report.
Mr. Duarte, just before you move on, just with the operations again, with the hours. Do you have an operator yet for this? My understanding is there is not one yet, no. So why don't we change the hours so the operator already knows going into this, maybe five to ten or five to eleven instead of the four a.m. to midnight?
We're going to talk to the client and see if they'll agree to that.
And what time, what time would the deliveries? I may have missed that. I don't know.
So there's no set time. Is that would depend on the vendor that's selected, but we agreed to have it during daytime hours. So it's not coming at night.
Nothing overnight.
Nothing overnight.
And maybe the hours could be adjusted for weekday or, you know, Monday through Thursday, Friday and Saturday. A little different. Let's
Yeah, based on
Come back to that.
Yeah, based on what the mayor said, we'll, we'll go back and see if we can get approval from the client to adjust the hours. I can't, I can't make that call.
So moving on to Mr. Ryden's report, the, I touched on, I already touched upon a number of these. I just want to infill on the numbers that I did. So one comment was regarding the curb radius at the egress of the drive-through lane. So specifically this radius here, it was requested that we increase that from the ten foot as shown on this plan to fifteen feet. We do agree to do that. Basically softens that turn for the traffic exiting the drive-through or someone exiting the site looking to get on some speed well. We will do that. There was a question regarding soil disturbance and our anticipated soil to be moved as part of construction. We designed the site as a fill site and what that means is soil will be brought in instead of brought out of the site. And we're looking at about two hundred and fifty to three hundred and fifty yards of fill being brought to the site as part of the construction efforts. That again is subject to change. If there's any, we're talking about some different changes here. So that, that number changed, but it'll be in that magnitude. There's also a question regarding the phase one environmental report. So the applicant did submit the report basically showing that there's no recognized environmental conditions on the site. Basically saying that there's nothing that warrants further investigation. However, something's found during construction, you know, an underground tank or an unknown condition. The applicant McDonald's will bring in our firm to be on site from the environmental perspective to make sure we address anything that needs to be addressed in a manner that is allowed by the N G P E. That will also apply to any soil that has to be exported. Our firm usually is on site to test that and coordinate any disposal efforts needed. And there was some questions regarding details. We definitely agree to all of those. So basically nine through fourteen, we'll definitely submit that in part of our revised application, revised site plans, incorporating those comments. Now onto the planning report. It's us upon the hairpin striping and we'll provide that. There was some comments regarding landscaping, so we'll look to enhance the buffer to the rear as well as potentially incorporating a berm. We'll take a look at what we can, can't do in that area. Specifically the rear of the property. Again, there, there is a super easement here, so I don't know if burning is something that would be permitted because we'd be adding soil on top of that sanitary line. So again, we'll consider additional landscaping and see what we can do there.
That's twenty-five feet to shore. Is it twenty-five feet? You definitely can get it in there.
Correct. We just want to make sure we're not, what the conditions of that easement say is they can permit us to do. We'll definitely check that and consider it. Regarding the traffic report, again, the traffic engineer will touch upon the specifics, but again, the state road Speedwell Avenue is under the D O T jurisdiction. So we have to submit for there with an approval for the project. We did have a pre-application meeting with the D O T to discuss the project. And the comments that we received from the D O T were to decrease the width, the crosswalk that we have shown. So we currently have it as a six foot. They want us to do ten feet and we'll, we'll provide that. We discussed the pedestrian flashing beacons that was requested basically to actuate, to actuate pedestrian signs that you hit the button and they'll flash when there's pedestrians track crossing the road. We presented that to the D O T that they're okay with it. And again, that was a letter, a pre-application meeting, but that will be something that gets further reviewed when an application is filed. But it will be incorporated in our, in our application. And then there was comment from, I believe, the police
Mr. Duarte, let's just go back to the, just so everybody understands, it's important. I know a lot of people have concerns about the crosswalk. So just tell everyone again, this road is under the jurisdiction of the Department of Transportation in New Jersey, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And so for us to move forward, we have to get approval from the State Department of Transportation, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And you had a meeting, pre-meeting with them, which is typical with applications like this. They reviewed the application and they provided some preliminary comments. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. And the one comment they said about the width is they would like us to have a ten-foot crosswalk rather than a six foot. Is that right?
Yes.
Okay. And we have agreed to do that.
Correct.
Okay. And they also suggested that we put in flashing beacons. Is that correct?
The township requested that.
The township requested, okay. And can you just explain for the, the public and the board? Because they may have seen these flashing beacons because they are other places, particularly in Maristown. What, what exactly they look like and how they function?
So when someone is looking to, to cross the roadway in either direction, either going away from the site or towards the site, there'll be a pedestrian level button that you can press that will activate the flashing lights. And those lights will shine along Speedwell Avenue to alert traffic that there's a pedestrian crossing ahead and there's someone crossing the street.
Is there any device like that there now?
There is nothing like that there now.
So that is a, an upgrade from the current condition, correct?
Yes. Similarly, on, at the intersection, so we have Dayton Road and Speedwell Avenue. One of the town comm, township comments was to provide, do not block striping. So that's something we'll incorporate in our plan and application to the D O T. This version of the plan does not show that, but that's something that'll be added in our revised plans. That concludes my direct.
Madam Chair, if I could follow up with some questions for you.
We can't either. I can't wait. Can we just start with?
Madam Chair, can I continue with some comments in the traffic? We partially addressed, but I'd like to complete it from our review report.
Okay. But if we could just, what about Bill? Were all of your questions answered?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Duarte has covered all the items in my report. I'm satisfied with his testimony. We just want to come back to the volume of soil to be imported or disturbed. Would you provide us with calculations to substantiate the numbers that you, that you provided here tonight?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I have.
Okay. And go ahead.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Duarte. I do have a couple of specific questions on your testimony. So if, let's just say the hours of operation at the restaurant are five to eleven. What time do staff start coming and what time do staff leave?
I would budget an hour before and an hour after, just to be real.
And you mentioned ten to fifteen people. Is that at all hours or is that just certain weeks?
That's the maximum shift.
Okay. So that would be, that would be morning?
Morning rush or lunch rush.
Okay. And dinner?
There were dinner, yes.
And dinner. And yeah. Where do the employees, where do you expect that they will park?
So there, again, there's parking on site, but we also, in our experience, a lot of the staff are carpooling or if it's an operator who's got multiple stores, they tend to shuttle along between the various stores that they have. There's public transportation and there's also, I mean, a lot of people who work here may or may not have cars. And like Mr., like Frank said earlier, the first job could be someone at McDonald's. So they wouldn't have a car necessarily. They'd be getting there through some other names.
Okay. It's just something the board might want to consider because obviously employee parking spaces don't turn over as frequently. And if you would want certain spaces designated that may be closer to neighboring properties. That's just something for the board to consider. Then the other question I had actually has to do with the parking on the north side of the site. How do you propose sort of safe circulation from those parking spaces to the front? They have to go across the drive-through aisle to the front door.
So we can incorporate another crosswalk that would, you know, channelize and direct pedestrians to where the front door is and where a safe area to cross or a designated area to cross would be.
The other question is, does the drive-through and the restaurant have the same operating hours?
It, it really depends on the location. Sometimes the lobby will close and the drive-through room is open. Other times they'll both stay open, follow the same hours.
Okay. Then a question about the black cladding of the proposed building. This obviously stands out on this roadway. And I'm curious, I'm sure McDonald's probably has certain
Patterns.
Patterns or whatever. Yeah. And if there was another alternative that might be more in keeping with the existing architecture in Maristown, particularly on Speedwell.
That's, that's certainly something we can move into the project architect.
Okay. And then to clarify, oh, sorry. Go ahead.
No, that's, that's maybe bring some samples.
Okay. What, can you clarify what a signage is being removed on the north and south facade? Or is it just on one facade?
So on the south facade, the McDonald's word mark, so this McDonald's sign will be removed. The rear sign has been already removed. That's the M logo that's referenced on our site plan. And then the balance will be the M logo in the front, the M logo on the south facade and the McDonald's word mark on the north facade. So this is facing Speedwell Avenue.
Okay. And then the only other thing I wanted to just say is I echo Mr. Kelly's comments that the applicant take a hard look at either. I know that you're proposing to relocate the Dayton Avenue exit, but just I'm curious as to the possibility of feasibility of removing it altogether.
Okay. We'll look at that.
Okay. Just referencing my report of June twenty-first, two thousand twenty-four. I believe you said, it was in my report actually about the pedestrian crossing signs being located at the new crosswalk location with the pedestrian actuate the beacons. I also noted to post advanced pedestrian crossing signs with supplemental signs underneath identifying either ahead or the distance to the crosswalk. Was that brought up at the department also?
It was. So that, that'll be something that's incorporated.
So they're in favor of those improvements as well as a ten-foot wide crosswalk?
They supported it in our pre-application meeting.
Okay. Just so I know, the intersection improvements being the crosswalk, the pedestrian crossing signs. Is that a separate application to the department from the access drive and the facility itself?
No, it'll be all one application.
All one application. Okay. First comment I had in my review on site plan related to the inbound lane from Speedwell Avenue. The single lane, the left side, the lane line on the left side of that inbound lane is approximately sixteen feet off, offset from the left side of the lane line for the rightmost drive-through lane. To the left post-drive-through lane, to the left side, to the left side is twenty-eight feet. And this is done in a longitudinal distance of only approximately thirty feet. This is a very abrupt S-turn that you have to make in order to get into one of those drive-through lanes. I made this comment during the concept discussion and the location of the driver shifted three feet. What I was wondering is, is it possible to shift the drive a little bit more to try and soften that curve? I do know that the D O T access code specifies you got to have a hundred feet from the curb return to corner, which would be Dayton to where your drive is. And you're somewhat close to that, but do you have any availability to soften this up some?
Yes. So we could take a look at that and meet the, the corner criteria for, for D O T. So yes, it's something we can
Okay. Also, I'd like you to provide passenger vehicle turning tablets to show this maneuver to either one of the drive-through lanes, that it could be reasonably accomplished. and is not too twisted. That was in my comment A one. You already commented on the ten-foot radius going up to fifteen, which I had. We already had the delivery refuse trucks. The nine-by-eight standard parking space that you have, there is a provision, ten-foot by twenty is required if you have nine-by-eighteen, but there's also a provision that if you don't have any obstructions in the front of the space, that you can count a two-foot overhead, which makes it essentially nine-by-twenty. Do the majority of your spaces meet that criteria? Or are they essentially ended up blocked?
No, all all the spaces do meet the the two-foot overhead.
So essentially, you you're providing nine-by-twenty's. Nine-by-eighteen's mark, but capability of nine-by-twenty.
Yes.
Correct. Okay. Okay, the one-way egress, this left turn only permitted to Dayton Road, I would note I heard what you're gonna do about geometrics to try and channel the exiting driver to the left, but you have to supplement it with appropriate traffic signs. One way, you're adding do not enter stop signs, but you should also have no left turn sign, no right turn sign exiting, and no left turn sign on Dayton coming in. So those signs should be added and also to the construction details.
Will do.
And then the last comment that I would like you to bring up is my last one, A ten. Drive-through lanes are shown capable of stacking eighteen vehicles with eight vehicles stacked between the order board and the crosswalk located before the start of the drive-through lanes. So this may be for the traffic engineer to address, but what's McDonald's anticipated maximum driveway, drive-through vehicle queue? It's been noted that approximately two-thirds of the site traffic is oriented to the drive-through. What happens if the double lane drive-through vehicle queue extends into the Speedwell Avenue side-drive area? What's going to happen? If it spills back onto Speedwell Avenue? That's why I think it's important to give the results of any studies that are performed.
So, yes, the traffic engineer will definitely touch upon that in his testimony. I would say that be part of projects where we've had a single lane McDonald's, I've gone to the dual lane. I've witnessed the queues for deck comparison go from, we call it nine spaces before there was a side-by-side, go down to three to four, sorry, four to five parking cars stacked at this configuration, a side-by-side configuration. So for this situation, this application, I would anticipate more than four to five behind the order point, but again, I'll let the the traffic engineer touch upon that with the specifics.
Okay, he'll get into more detail.
Yes.
The last thing I'd like to just comment on, which was brought up by, I think, somebody from Ford, one of the professionals, was closing Dayton Road access altogether. In terms of circulation, I would prefer to keep the, just like to note, I prefer to keep Dayton Road egress open with left turnout only, because if the Speedwell access or for people exiting gets blocked, then to park people parking along the south and east side, instead of being locked up inside also, would have an alternate way out to make a left out to get to Speedwell Avenue. If you don't have the Speedwell Avenue access, you lose that circulation capability. I would just, that isn't a question of you, just my comment to something I heard. That concludes my comments. The rest of my comments relate to traffic, which is another witness.
Okay, um, let's start with some questions from the board.
I had a question on your architecture, which is brought up, so what is the plan for other options?
There are a number of, I guess, color schemes that we can look at, so that's something we'll consider, getting ready to apply, considering if there's a different color scheme, that would be more appropriate.
How about at the very beginning with the demolition and the building of this? Are the people that live behind there going to be protected properly? You gonna have dust remediation when that building comes down? Are we gonna fence the property? Are we gonna worry about traffic coming in and out with cement trucks? It's gonna be a lot of chaos in the beginning.
Yes, so so to that, I'll say, the project is also subject to SED approval, soil conservation, so they'll review the plan for the construction and demolition based from the soil disturbance perspective, so there is mitigation for dust, you have to control that during construction, so that's that's something that'll be implemented. As far as, you know, construction vehicles, we'll definitely have to coordinate that with DOT, because we have to get their their approval for that that change, and that's something that they also look at as part of the review of the application. And then I presume you'd also have a pre-construction meeting with the town to outline all the concerns, to correct parties, to notify and keep in the loop of all construction activities, so that's something that would be done for permitting. And then also on the protecting neighbors, absolutely, that's key, especially when you have an existing building that's on the property line. The means and methods of how that construct, demolition gets done has to be carefully foredated.
Does Morris Plains require a pre-construction logistics plan? Yeah? Yes? Yeah, so, just for the benefit of everyone here, typically, we we would have all of our GC and all the trades and everyone, they all weigh in on the construction logistics plan, and that would demarcate, for example, any pedestrian detours, in and outs for the trucks, the concrete trucks, traffic control, all of that is laid out on a separate plan, and that's reviewed with the building department in Morris Plains, and they come to a consensus, so we avoid the very good question that you raised, so there's no surprises for the residents and the people who live around there. And so when you have a logistics planner who follows it, and it's not just, hey, today we're doing this or that, so, but no, that's that's a good question.
Just one quick question. You noted before how the dynamics have changed, where most people are going through drive-ins and not not sitting in the restaurants, but we do have a bit of pedestrian traffic along the way, and we have people who are riding bicycles and maybe even some riding scooters. I didn't see any accommodations for any storage areas or facilities to accommodate that, might also be for some of your, some of the workers as well, so I'm just wondering what your thoughts are on that.
Tiago, are we showing on any bike racks?
We do not currently, but that's a good suggestion and something we can definitely incorporate, and I would say we'd probably put it up in the area between the store and Speedwell Avenue, so it's it's in front of the customer service area.
Yeah, no, that's a very good suggestion, and we'll definitely, we could provide that.
Thank you.
Yes, you did answer my question about, I'm sorry, I'm so sorry. You did ask my, answer my question about how many employees you have, and you touched on where do they park, and you specifically mentioned things like some of your employees will be under the age of seventeen or maybe find other routes, but what if they're not? Where are they going to park? I I don't know how you can have that many parking places, that's one of my questions, and I have another.
So what we can do for employees is we can designate some of the parking, so specifically looking at the rear, there's nine parking spaces back there, which are the least desirable spaces due to their distance from the entry doors to the customer areas. So we could designate, you know, some of these spaces at the rear of the building as employee-only to to save that for the staff.
Also, you may have touched on this earlier, but I'm really concerned with the drive-through, and what if a lot of people happen to come in to order food at the same time and there's a backup? Where are those cars gonna do? How are you gonna stop those cars from coming in? Or do you?
So, as, I think we touched upon it just now, but the stacking, so that's the numbers, vehicle spaces that are, how much room you have for vehicles before the order point? So we've got room for ten, so ten would take us from the order canopies, and that would take us all the way up to where the curb line is, I'm hovering over the cursor, so from here at the order points to just beyond the ADA parking, we're talking about ten cars that can be accommodated in the drive-through without backing into the area of the driveway, entrance off of Speedwell.
That's my concern, how do you, how would you stop that? If it's ten and then more people come in?
Again, if it's my experience...
Is somebody gonna be out there and say, you can't come in now, or?
Definitely the the traffic engineer can...
I'm sorry.
The traffic engineer can touch upon that with specifics to the volumes, but again, in my experience, I've never witnessed anything where there's more than ten in one of these side-by-sides.
Well, we do, we do, we have in this town see some places where it backs up more than ten. It's a bigger parking lot, obviously, but I just wonder what you were gonna do, how would you handle that? Also, I know what off-peak hours means, but what do you mean specifically by your off-peak hours for deliveries?
So specifically for off-peak, for the deliveries and the refugees pickup, would be daytime hours, so not at night, and between either the morning rush...
You did say between breakfast, lunch, lunch and dinner?
Correct, yes.
And that's it?
Yes.
Nothing late at night?
Nothing late at night.
Thank you.
Yeah, listening to your testimony, now, the people who are coming in the drive-in, they'll go right around and they'll go right out on Speedwell, because that's where it ends. So I guess I assume that the people who are going to go out on Dayton are are those people who are parked in the parking lot. But as you testified, you have enough parking, even though it's a little below what we require, and you'll have some employees who will take some of it, and you'll have some customers that walk in, so there won't be really too many cars that will use to Dayton exit. So I guess my conclusion is that if you don't have that many cars, which you testified basically to, you don't need it, and they could go out on Spadewell, and that's what I think you should consider.
Yes, well, we're definitely gonna look at Dayton, the Dayton egress, that again, that's something that a lot of people are concerned about. I will, I will just note that that curb-cut exit entrance has been there for thirty years at least since Friendly's is there, and I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna say that it's there without a reason, because there are certain elements of circulation that you have to have. Nonetheless, we will, of course, look at it, because it seems to be, you know, something that everyone's concerned about, so for the next meeting, we will do our homework and come back with some ideas.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question. More of a question. You made reference to, again, this probably is a model that might be similar to what you might have in a city or whatever, where there would be pedestrian traffic.
I never said that.
With the proximity to the school and the fact that we have a very limited busing system, I'd say the majority of the children are either picked up by their parents or they're walking. I can see a potential problem with kids coming in after school, and I'm not sure how that's gonna be handled with a safety issue. Children being children, there's there's an element of danger that I think that you're introducing, and somehow I think there's some questions that need to be raised, and I think we have to anticipate if there are problems, who's gonna, whose problem is gonna be? Is there gonna be some kind of traffic control? There gonna be a pedestrian, somebody helping with pedestrian crossing? But I think it has to be raised, whether it's with your traffic engineer or...
Sure, yeah, we'll definitely raise that one. Traffic, I I will say, there's one thing that kids like more than cheeseburgers, and it's ice cream. And Friendly's was there for thirty years, picking and dropping off kids, and and they they made it work, so we'll make it work, and we'll we'll get on.
We'll have an opportunity.
Well, as I said, I just think that it's worth raising the question.
Hundred percent agree with you. I agree with you, and we will, we will have our engineer address it.
Thank you. Okay. It's about ten minutes to ten, and so we will start hearing questions of the public. You're going to come up and you're going to speak into that microphone. You have to state your name and address, and these can be questions only that have been, about information that's specified by... Uh, is it on?
Yes. Anton Waythre, Drew and Road, Morris Plains, New Jersey. Tiago, just the first question I had, you mentioned early on about your experience in Morris County. You mentioned Montville and, correct me if I'm wrong, Forum Park. Montville is Pineville, right on Route forty-six? Is that the correct location?
Yes.
Okay, so again, just on Route forty-six, Columbia Turnpike, Forum Park. Yes, again, a four-lane highway essentially, additional lanes added in order to to address traffic coming outside of the McDonald's on that that side over there, if anyone knows that location, you know, I'm referring to. When you come out of McDonald's, you had to eliminate entrance to what was originally the primary location, primary entrance, and move into a separate exit if you were making a left to go towards Columbia Turnpike. And then onto Columbia Turnpike, they added an exit, added an entrance onto Columbia Turnpike because of the amount of traffic that was coming out of it from other things to the shopping center, the McDonald's, and what they increased in that to shopping center, correct?
I was not part of that application.
Forgive me, that's what you mentioned, you mentioned Forum Park earlier.
Yes, I worked on the Forum Park application, but not when it was, because there was, there was different things happening that time.
Okay. And I know Forum Park well, I've worked not far from there, one of the cleanest kept McDonald's around, but there's still loads of garbage all over the...
Do you have a question?
They were allowed to speak for two hours, I can, can I get to my point?
No, no.
It's a question, I'm leading to a question.
Okay.
And it weighs back, there's one of them, right? So coming out of the drive-through, at that location, there's two garbage cans, and they're constantly overflowed from people just dumping their stuff there, whatever it may be, right? So that's one question, how do we address that at this location, being on, you know, Speedwell Avenue is not much after the last, on your, on your, your last drive-through window there, there's no space for garbage cans. No space for anything, truthfully, even a left-hand turn, just to get back to Speedwell. So how do we address, not only the garbage, but that question of that turn?
Uh, there there is room, so we can add trash receptiles there to help control that condition, and then as far as the operations of it, it's really, it's a store management and regular.
Okay. So just so I'm clear, in order for me or somebody to decide that we're gonna go in and eat, to park at any of those locations, in one way, shape or form, I have to cross the drive-through, right? Correct?
On the south side and the north side, yes.
So no matter where I park, I have to cross the drive-through?
Yes.
When you, and this is, I'm not sure if this is really, you're rolling up, I'm gonna ask it, when you set up a plan like this, when you set up a location, McDonald's has to give you or should give you some sort of indication of the number of customers on a daily basis?
Uh, they do not have to give you that, and that part of their estate review, which I'm not part of, I'm just designing a site for one of the local buildings. They give me the information of what they're looking to do here, and we develop a plan on that line.
Do we have any idea what a, what a, McDonald's in a population loca, location similar to this would do in terms of number of customers on a daily basis? Do we have any idea what that is? I don't have that. You know who would be able to provide that to us? Do you know who would be able to provide that to us?
The, the, yeah, that is part of, again, their, their research in the, in the site. But again, I'm not part of that, so I don't.
I, I would just like, if, if you want to answer my question is, is it a hundred? Is it a thousand? Is it somewhere in between? Where is the average number of visits to a McDonald's in a location with a population of this area?
Do you have any idea? I don't have that.
Our traffic engineer relies on certain assumptions on how many people come. So I think our traffic engineer will definitely touch on that.
Respectfully, I, I don't wanna work on assumptions, right? So-
You don't have to say that to me. I just told you that our traffic expert will address that. I'm not making any assumptions. I'm not, he is going to address that.
You didn't use the word assumptions. I did not.
Okay, you said respectfully, which is-
Yeah, respectfully, I just think we can rely on assumptions of areas. We have a, we have a unique request here for a two-lane highway, highway with highly trafficked location. And we need to know roughly what is a number of lo-, of customers serviced at a location like this. If it's a thousand, and the reason I try to bring this up, if it's a thousand and seventy percent of that is drive-through, then we have to question what, what we're gonna learn here in a few minutes or the next week, whatever it may be. That could be six or seven hundred vehicles, right? I doubt that's the case. Do, but somewhere in between here, somebody knows an answer that they should be sharing with us as a tech. We really wanna, I understand there's a traffic discussion and there's trips and all these, I understand that, that's fine. But that's my question. Someone should be able to say, a McDonald's with a population of Morris Town, Morris Plains, Whippenny, Cedar Knoll, Randolph, Morris Township, with that population can expect X number of visits per day. That would be my request for, for that. There was no mention at all of security systems. Cameras, videos, nothing on-site. I think there should be. If we're gonna have this number of, you know, the number of traffic or things coming in and out, you're gonna wanna know what's happening. I think that's, that's important. So is there a plan for a security system, anything like that on-site?
To my knowledge, uh, no.
Okay. Appreciate the honesty. Regarding the entrances and exits, uh, it was mentioned earlier, the S-turn there going back on the Speedway. And in your presentation, you had an eighteen-wheeler, what appeared to be an eighteen-wheeler, coming in for deliveries or not. Is an eighteen-wheeler the standard vehicle for deliveries? For a McDonald's that's expected to do whatever the body is, because we don't know that yet?
McDonald's has one, has a standard vehicle, but it's full-size.
So my question is-
That turns us all over the store, so, you know, city for-
So they're doing multiple visits, but it's an eighteen-wheeler roughly that comes in and out of all the locations. So an eighteen-wheeler making the left-hand turn into here in off-hours, which are somewhere between nine and twelve, and call it two and five, I think would be something we have to address or question, uh, in the traffic study, which we'll ask him when he gets here. But separately, trying to make a right or a left out of here, it doesn't look like that's possible unless they go on to Dayton. And introducing an eighteen-wheeler onto Dayton, trying to make that turn, I have serious concerns about. And I certainly bring that to the, uh, traffic engineer. Thank you.
Hi, uh, my name is Richard Sacker. I live on Birch Drive.
Uh, excuse me, sir, your address on Birch?
Twenty-one.
Thank you.
You can visit whatever you want. For, for our expert, um, in addition to trying to compare us to major highways being both, um, Montville and right through Forum Park, when you tried to make a point that we have fast food restaurants like Chipotle and, um, what's the one that's never- Chipotle, you forgot to mention that they're literally on highway and not right in the middle of our town. So a little bit, I, I was kind of troubled by, it took two hours and so to get there and not until Mr. Kelly brought up the fact that literally across the street is our school where our seven and eight-year-olds go to.
This time is, is-
Yeah, I got a question, man.
Okay.
I'll get there. I'm sorry. The two hours and twenty minutes where we were kind of talked down to by the fraternity was very upsetting. We don't have a lawyer here about, in our community of caring about our children. And the fact that they're across the street, it's not a problem that they went to Friendly's here as well. It's not a problem they might go get a burger at McDonald's. The problem is we don't have a safe way of getting our kids across that street with any of the things you have. And putting in a little guide lights that we suggested is not a way to make it safer than it was.
What's your question?
How can you, how can you, how can you actually think that it is safer for our community and our children to do this and just put in guide lights and kind of mock our entire place?
Can they go mocking you?
Absolutely. Millions of seven and three, "Oh, I wanna go to the bathroom. Am I gonna get attacked?" You've been mocking us the entire time.
Yeah, excuse me, excuse me. You are out, that, that is not appropriate.
I'm sorry. I feel like it is inappropriate, but wait, wait, you spoke in two hours, you wanna get it?
You can attack me, or if you, if you feel better attacking me personally, go right.
Why are you slating the hammer like he's doing here?
But if you have a question, we have a bunch of witnesses that can answer your question. But if you don't like my sense of humor, I apologize to everybody who doesn't like my sense of humor. I'm very sorry to hurt feelings, okay? But if you have a question, we can, if you wanna know about pedestrian access-
Safety for our children.
Then Mr. Duarte can answer those questions.
Mr. Duarte, our expert, please answer the questions about how our children will safely be able to get across the street if they wanna go get a burger with the fact that there is law.
Or walk on the street.
Walk at a time, please. Go ahead.
The, well, it's close to street, so we're, we're back in front edge along Speedway on the east side. So again, there's a crosswalk there. We're improving it, we're lighting it, we're adding beacons. And it's all subject to the DOT's review.
But there's no security, uh, plan in place you do to help, right? But this is something you-
That's not still the verdu, that's, that wasn't, that wasn't.
Thanks, Adam.
Barry Crawford here. Hi, my name is Carolyn Bennett. I am a resident of nineteen Dayton, which we're all familiar with after this presentation. I do have a few questions, so if you will just take the time. Um, this is specifically regarding the part of the testimony about the exit onto Dayton, my street, where I live with my three kids. They have to be, if you heard them. Um, so I think you might have said that nobody's going to try to turn right if it's a left turn only. And if they do, you should open a spare tire shop? I think that's what you said.
What I said was that-
Oh, no, I'm sorry, I'm getting to my question. So I would just like to reinforce that people do do that on September fourth. I have to file a piece of report, case number two zero two four, two four two nine seven, because there's a dead end on Canfield Place, which I'm sure you're familiar with because it's in proximity to this. And a truck went over the median-type dead-end area that's not for through traffic, almost running over myself and my three kids. And since then, thankfully, the town has put in big holders there. But how can you assure that nobody's gonna try to turn right if people are already breaking traffic laws in the town, in this area, trying to cut through because of the traffic?
What we- What we want to do is relook at the Dayton exit. That's what we're promising to do. And I said a couple of things that we would consider. But because you're concerned and you live on the street, so of course that concerns us. We're gonna look at it and we're gonna come up with some ideas. That's the best I can, I can't come up with a solution right now because I'm not a traffic engineer. But we can certainly, we're gonna look at it.
Um, and then just to further support that, I'm sure there's people in this room that have gone to Wendy's at eighteen sixty Route ten in Parsippany, which is also on two oh two. Um, that is a right turn only exit. People in this room on shore turn left all the time, every time. So after looking into that, I would just appreciate you also checking out best practices from other fast food places in the area.
Can you tell me what-
Can, can, wait a second, can I, can I address one or two things? And maybe this will help the public a little bit to understand why it's set up for questions and not, please let me speak, one person at a time. You'll understand when I go through it. As I said, there's people that are, have strong feelings about this application. I don't know how anybody up here is gonna vote or how it's gonna go. If, in fact, this were to go to a court and they're reading the transcript, testimony, when people make statements without a question mark at the end, are disregarded if the person's not under oath. They have to be under oath. So the, the disagreements that have been expressed will not be considered by the court. Absolutely won't be because the person's not under oath. You have to be. That's why we can't take statements that people signed out of, you know, out of here or petitions. I, I, I'm just saying, it's not gonna help your cause if you make comments down. It just won't be considered. There will be a time at the end for everybody to make comments, everybody can get, and that is the time. It will be sworn in, you have to tell the truth. I understand it's, you, you, some, there's some venting, there's some disagreement, absolutely. And that's very good. I'm not making, this is really good. But to the extent you want to get things on the record because it would, put things on the record, if you say the man when you're not under oath, they will not be considered. That, that's just the rules of how the court views what is stated during hearing. That being said-
Thank you. My question is, since COVID, we see the drive-in, DoorDash, DoorDash deliveries, Uber drivers, I think of similar along the way with this drive-through prominent plan. So where are those drivers going to be waiting who are rushing to make deliveries because they're getting paid for delivery? So they want that, 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 many orders as they can. Where are they waiting in this diagram?
Also, I'm, I'm here. So of these six spaces that are striped on the drive inside of the building, two are designated for mobile order, uh, actually, four are designated for mobile order. So that includes Uber needs a new delivery. So they're designated spots for those services to park them on their, coming to store to pick up an order.
Gotcha. So part of the existing, okay, gotcha. How many trash cans ever goes in this parking lot? Right now I'm seeing a huge litter problem on my street where my kids live and they and I just wanna know what's the plan for trash cans?
There is none on this front lane, but we can look into that. Except that's on-site.
Thank you. Um, and for the hours of operation that you stated, I know that's still in question. Can public, can people from the public access the bathroom without being a customer?
I don't know. Do you know, or my, what department testifies?
So you did testify on the hours of operation. You guys are gonna relook into it. If you could just consider that as a follow-up, it would be, I would be interested in knowing that as somebody that does not want people using this facility for bathroom purposes who can't go elsewhere. And I realize that's not a question, so I will just continue. Um, you did testify how you're in a meeting with the DOT and you are looking to optimize the crosswalk, which is not on the screen, but you can see it above. My question is, have you had similar meetings representing other companies? And other companies are able to get these crosswalk approvals or is the crosswalk approval specific to the McDonald's franchise?
The, we, is the question, have it done a crosswalk that gives?
No, the question is, have, have you seen crosswalk optimizations made for other companies or only for the McDonald's franchise?
Yes, I, I've seen it and I've been a part of it on other projects.
That's part of it.
Also improvements for, for-
And then specifically, you guys testified how the sound level from the speakers, the drive-through to where the property line sits is about twenty decibels. I think the reference was firing on a library. So can you please elaborate on the decibel level of the cars that will be parked there? Or was the twenty decibel specific to the speakers closer to the building?
The decibels I mentioned were specific to the, the drive-through systems and the speakers in, in a room.
So do you know what the decibel level is for the trash removal that's for closer to the, like, opening the gates, doing the dumpster thing? Or cars parked there blasting music, killing time, et cetera?
On the trash, uh, pickup, so there's TV standards that have to be by the door, uh, by the body. So daytime, we've got permissible level, sound level is sixty-five decibels. So wherever trucks comes on some, they can pick up the trash, that's a lot of that. As far as music getting in hours, that is not. We didn't, I did testify to that.
You testified about the sound decibel coming from the building, so I'm just, can you clarify what the sound, the decibel level would be of the cars parked, not for the sound segment, the cars parked closer to the residence on the street?
There's so many variables in that.
Okay, that's your answer. Um, so the staff, which has been voted of ten to fifteen people throughout the shift, breakfast, lunch, dinner, um, is that typical for the drive-through meat of this type of facility? Or is that just standard across McDonald's of shifts?
It's standard across the McDonald's products I've worked on, which include the side-by-side.
And then speaking of the other McDonald's that you've worked on, um, can you elaborate on other companies that you've represented besides sixty McDonald's?
As, as far as traffic, this is just a project.
Either. I just wanna know if you've only worked on McDonald's or if you've represented other companies as well?
No, I mean, for all types of that.
Um, and how are we going to stop cars parking in the lot overnight? I know the lights are gonna be dim, but I'm sure open car park is somewhere that a lot of people are gonna wait, hang around, wait for the four AM shift with the buffer, maybe three AM will get there. So is there a plan in place to prevent cars from idling, hanging out, being creepy on the road where my kids and I live?
I, I think that would, that would enforce it. We could have to post times on ID.
Okay, and then specifically for the construction, I have two more. I appreciate everyone's time. So what is the construction timeline looking at and how will our road be affected in terms of digging it up, waterline, all of that nitty-gritty?
So all, all that is, uh, yeah, designing or planning work. Um, as far as, you know, where it's located, so chances are there are people that's where the majority of the service lines are. But as part of the demolition, you have an existing service lines, so that has, uh, well, certain, the Friendly's and what have you. But then, again, you can move to, uh, to the past, review the approval.
I see. Okay, more to come on that. Um, my last question, and I'm a two-year-old resident, so I'm still getting the feel, but I'm just curious to see what your guys' stance is on how this facility, the plan you outlined, supports the community repair rate?
I mean, it's, it's a permitted use, so that's-
Our planner will adjust, uh, address the arguments on, uh, benefits and so our professional planner, he's actually here tonight, but he'll be testifying, yes, next year. So he'll be able to.
Awesome. Thank you guys so much.
Goodbye, ninety-one, somewhere away. Um, just a point of clarification, uh, sorry, Mr. Brewer, um, I'm not joking, I have a little bit of heart here, so I'm climbing, comes in and out. You indicated that everything has to be in the form of a question and a sworn witness to be considered by the board. Is that correct?
Testimony, that is, that's, that's a general, court reviews it or it is board, is for the, I'm giving you the explanation, the same reason that the board does not consider out-of-court statements from people that made their hearsay. They, while they're not bound by the rules of evidence, they always follow it. And that's, that's, that's what's gonna happen. And if a court reviews it, the court will not view statements that are made that are not under oath the same way they will under oath. That, I'm, I'm trying to, please, let me, no, no, please, please let me explain. And, and I think this is one of the things, and I understand it, because about ninety-nine percent of the time that we converse with other people, it's conversation and we jump in in the middle, we do that. It doesn't work in a proceeding where someone's taking a damn, so please don't interrupt each other. I try not to do it to anybody else and if the board does, it doesn't work very well to keep a clean record. So without putting words in my mouth, what I'm saying is that in order for the board at a court to consider the comments and thoughts and opinions that you have, those must be done at the time when you're under oath. The other times when they come in, they're really not gonna be considered the same way. It is a, it is a, I'm trying to, believe it or not, help you make a record that helps what you wanna say.
So directly related to what you said, we have the questions, who is under oath in this room? So, directly related to what you said, we have the questions, who is under oath in this room?
The witness that spoke for the applicant was under oath from the very beginning.
So, then any other declarations, statements, or narratives said by anybody else with the expert under oath is not to be considered by the board, including that of counsel, correct?
What now is his questions of the applicant. Gil, I can speak more fun about procedure. You're wasting time.
You just defined procedure. I'm asking who's under oath. You defined procedure for under oath is what's to be considered, question and answer. And I'm asking the question, who's under oath? I'll go directly to it then. So, you are, you are the expert. Anything can be asked and anything can be answered. You're the expert representing, uh, the applicant, correct?
No, I'm the civil agent.
Are you, are you the declared expert for the subject matter to which you spoke today?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So, of the, um, 60 some on McDonald's, have you ever designed a McDonald's that's not dry-dried?
No.
Has anybody else ever designed a McDonald's that's not dry-dried?
That wasn't my testimony. I'm sure there's inline stories over there.
There are. So, there are McDonald's designs that are not dry-dried?
Yes.
So, when counsel earlier asked you if this plan is typical and standard to all McDonald's, that wasn't an accurate statement. It wasn't?
It's not what I said.
The record could reflect that. You can, you can reject it, my statement. So, there are designs that are, this is not typical of all McDonald's, is it?
This is typical of all McDonald's under oath.
Which are all dry-dried?
Correct.
Okay. So, there's alternate options available, thank you. Um, you earlier spoke to, uh, there was a Department of Transportation meet, and they made some recommendations, correct? And you followed one of them, I think, noted?
We have not, we've agreed to submit an application incorporating my comments.
Right. And there was testimony, I believe, that one, a suggestion of the Department of Transportation was adopted, correct? Or spoke it to, to work on and agree on? I think it had to regard to the lighting and the cross, something, some blinking on the side.
We presented the, the flashing beacon to veteran signs, to the DOT, as a comment of the board that provided us as the applicant. Uh, and the DOT was supportive of that proposal.
Did the Department of Transportation make any other recommendations or provide guidance in any way regarding the plan?
Yes, they requested that, to provide the crosswalk across the people avenue be increased to 10 meters from its current distance.
Did the Department of Transportation make any recommendations, suggestions, or comments that were not adopted?
No.
Earlier, you testified, uh, it was actually a quick question to answer in about two seconds. Counsel asked you if, if you ever, if there's ever been any issues whatsoever with car traffic flow blockage due to trucks. You answered the question, basically, as soon as you finished, uh, you answered the question as soon as you finished it. So, what is the basis of that? Out of all the McDonald's across the nation, how are you aware that there's zero? I think your answer was nine. There's never an issue?
Correct. Their, their standard operations do not have designated, uh, loading area for the trucks. And that's their national standards that they provide with their civil engineers to implement when designing their sites. So, in the 60 stores that I have, and work on, the loading area has not been.
No, but you said there wouldn't be issues with cars being blocked?
Correct, exactly.
How would you know there was never an issue with cars being blocked?
Blocked from the sense that the site circulation is competing. There is decently blocked aisle where the truck is envisioned to stage, and that is by number required to get by a car.
You can't factually state that there's never been an issue with cars being blocked on McDonald's. You say there's a, there's a design that's around, but you don't know factually. I'm sorry? Lastly, there was, uh, had, are you aware of any McDonald's, uh, designs that were built? That, uh, oh, actually, are you an expert on McDonald's designs and builds? Yes?
No, they have their own internal.
Okay. So, so you have no expertise with regard to non-dry-dried McDonald's?
I don't.
And what percentage of McDonald's that are dry-dried are typically in a town with one small road that's a main road versus a highway?
Can't, I don't.
But you can answer that approximately X percentage is dry-dried versus parking, that there's no lower traffic issues?
Yes, because I've studied these sites I've worked on. I'm not studying the general aspects of where the McDonald's are located.
And then lastly, you testified that you planned this stack, and I think it's for 10 cars, right?
There is sufficient for 10 cars before.
So, how will you address what counsel outlined, that at a typical Starbucks, there's 30 cars lined up? When you made a point that the red and yellow.
I never said that. I never said that. I never said there were 30 cars lined up at a Starbucks. Never said that. Never. You don't have to answer that.
Um, that's it. I appreciate your time. Thank you, sir.
Rachel Ryan, we're at 40 St. Allen Avenue. Um, you mentioned, uh, the hours of operation were different for the drive-through versus sit-down portions at this location. Uh, and you said it was dependent on the location. But for this location, what would be the difference in the drive-through hours versus the, um, restaurant sit-down hours?
For this application, there, we are something, 4:00 AM to 12:00 AM. There's no difference between the lobby and the drive-through.
Okay. Um, and then from the, I mean, all of your scope of the State Department of Transportation, have they done their own traffic study about this? Since it's a state road?
Not to my knowledge.
Have you met with the Morris Plains Police Department about this area of pedestrian safety?
Uh, as part of the application, the police department issued comments on the plan. And we are, I believe, the police department is the one that requested to do not block the intersection, the striping, uh, speedway, which we agreed to provide.
So, they suggested, which is great, um, but since it's on a state road, does that have to be approved by the state?
Yes, it will be included in our application with the DOT.
Okay. Thank you. Um, you mentioned delivery being off-hours, but they would also seem to be those off-hours during school hours, um, specifically when children are coming and going from the building. As was noted, it's mainly pedestrian traffic. How do you plan to prevent that, impeding the school pedestrian traffic if you're an 18-wheeler and the one way getting into the location?
I guess, I mean, we can further restrict when that delivery occurs. If we want to say only have three, ten, five, ten, nine, ten, you can, you can look at that.
Okay. Um, I'm not sure if you've mentioned this, or if you've mentioned this. They mentioned being McDonald's, being a community partner to Morris Plains. Can you elaborate a little bit more on what that means?
So, um, my understanding is that McDonald's operators, who in this case would be a franchisee, um, almost uniformly are involved in communities that they're in, whether it be, you know, the typical things that businesses are involved, uniforms for kids, you know, fundraising, civic groups. So, on the operator level, they'll be involved in the community. On the national level, I mean, everyone knows around the McDonald House, there's like, I want to say 50, 80 million dollars a year that go into the programs. A lot of that money comes from McDonald's directly, and a lot of it comes from people who go into stores. Uh, we could certainly provide more information for you on the level of that involvement, but it's extensive. Um, look, they've been doing this a long time. So, they know that you have to have relationships with the community if you're going to have success, so, for sure.
But you don't have an operator for this location yet?
Correct. So, we don't have our approvals then. So, when we get our, uh, approvals, then McDonald's will take the next step of identifying an operator, uh, usually local, almost always local, who operates in the area, operates the store.
Is there, you said they generally follow the same guidelines. Is there an outline in front of, you know, corporate and family for what they want their operators to do in the local market?
I'll find out for you.
Okay, thank you. That's all. Thank you.
Okay, so. It's just about 10:30. All right, we've all been here for a long time. Um, there's a very long line. We're not going to get to everybody tonight. I'd say we've got 15 minutes. You want to do that? Tell them, Jacob. Okay. We'll have, we'll cut it off at 11 o'clock. Okay, so, um, go ahead.
Before I continue, I'm running out of power, so I have my cord, so I might need a.
Yeah, let's turn the cord, so you can gather an extension.
Absolutely.
Keep going.
And then I can plug into anything, though. I'm like, it's fine. I have, I have everything.
I made exact result, uh, resident of 39 Campbell Place, Morris Plains. Um, regarding the, uh, the entrance of this speedwell path, uh, specifically, so talking edge here in the radius is, if the tractor-trailer is turning off the speedwell into the entrance for delivery, is there enough room for the tractor-trailer while not going into the other lane to turn right into speedwell, uh, sorry, into the property? Uh, given the size of the highways pre-1930, what, pre-1927 would be the original designation? Can the tractor-trailer actually turn into the driveway?
So, sheet 17 or, sheet 18 or cycling set shows that left leaning for, for the truck. And yes, they can make a new study of driving without going into on the traffic.
Sorry, trying to write my mind wrong, uh, so they can use the mouse at the point where they're coming.
So. Is it, is the maneuver you're asking about, the left turn for a tractor-trailer into the site?
So, uh, yes, can a tractor-trailer turn right if they are going northbound on speedwell path, given that the center of town does not have a bridge tall enough to accommodate a tractor-trailer?
We can provide that to them.
Thank you. That's all the questions I have.
This is, this is sheet 18 from the site plan set.
It's, it's sheet 18 from the site plan set, so it's in the materials that we already submitted. Thank you.
Go ahead.
Hi, Paul Lurie, 18 Hillview Avenue, Morris Plains. Uh, there've been a lot of numbers bandied about regarding the parking, how many parking spaces there are, how many people might park there, how many people are those people that have electric vehicle spaces? Can we get an actual number, a projection from somebody, of how many people, employees, people who are projected to be eating there, and people who are going to be in spots that are designated that won't be able to be used by anybody else that's in for an electric vehicle or something else?
The track engine is the provider, additional data.
I think it's a little silly to suggest that most of the employees are going to be taking public transportation workmen, or they're walking, or doing something else. Will there be traffic enforcement on Hillview Avenue, which is currently a property and for which we have prior permits to park on our own street? Will there be enforcement and there will be, there will be protection from all the people who might be parking to go to work there on Hillview Avenue? Anyone? You want?
I think that the clerk's office issues parking permits for your street, and I think that's one of the reasons that they, they have these parking permits. And that's a responsibility of the police to go up and down the street and check those permits and make sure that they're parked, which they ongoingly do right now with, with those, uh, parking restrictions.
They absolutely do. And that's, that's, just want to make sure that we're not having an employee parking coming down on Hillview Avenue.
I believe if the employees park there, and they don't have a sticker, and the police are enforcing it, they'll be taken care of.
Can you check, uh, on the map, please, uh, where the exits are and where Hillview Avenue would be strictly across the street?
Pull up on the area, look to the table. So, again, the property is outlined in what, uh, Hillview Avenue is to the west.
And so, the exit and entrance would be directly across from the entrance to Hillview Avenue?
Uh, there is an offset.
Does it look like one?
The intersection, uh, hovering, okay, so the site line rendering. The intersection. This is the crosswalk across the street, and our driveway, uh, entrance and exit are offset from that, that existing street.
Thank you.
Um, more than a hundred children go to Joyful Noise preschool at the Presbyterian Church in Morris Plains, which is across the street from the proposed McDonald's. And they enter the school parking lot by turning into Hillview Avenue from Speedwell on both sides. How does the proposed McDonald's entrance-exit plan allow for cars turning left out of the McDonald's to react in time to car sign warning if they're trying to turn left from Speedwell to Hillview? And I'm talking specifically if they're coming out of Dayton's and they're making a left turn. The proposed McDonald's entrance-exit is only about 20 to 30 feet away from Hillview or staying within Dayton's. Have you considered this as a safety issue?
Yeah, so again, on that, the track engine, you testified, so the, the turning movements also be blocked.
Okay. Um, and then also, I just wanted to make clarifying. Um, I think it was suggested in your report that you were going to make the crosswalk a little bit wider. Uh, is there something about moving it or adding another one as well?
So, the DOT requested that be widened, again, to 10 feet. The proposed, it's on the screen at 6 feet. The reason we are relocating from existing locations is because we're moving the site driveway. Uh, again, there's one there now for the office commercial space. Uh, and we're moving further and more along Speedwell. So, that's why we're relocating the crosswalk to increase separation between driveway and crosswalk.
Okay. And finally, I know you guys mentioned adding a beacon, uh, which would make it feel a little bit safer for pedestrians. Um, would you suggest anything else to improve the safety, especially those of schoolchildren, that are crossing the guard during schooltime? Another stoplight at Dayton or somewhere nearby? Or even if it's a flashing sign just for the cars? Because I noticed when cars are going down Speedwell, and I tried to cross the street there yesterday just to go to the McDonald's. Like, they're not really, because it's not, um, like, a four-way intersection, they're not looking at pedestrians trying to cross, they're not protecting. Is there any other, like, flashing sign or slow down children, something? Anything else that you guys can, or have suggestions?
Yeah, and so the application goes into conclusion to the flashlights, as well as advanced signs along the street, showing how far away the off. It creates a, keep driving, attention to the fact that there's a busy crosswalk.
Okay, thank you. Do you hear me, man? Joy Golden. Thank you.
Carl Ray, 22 Dayton Road. Um, I don't know, I may have missed it. Uh, did you direct, kind of, uh, maybe this isn't your area of expertise, but not maybe this is someone else that, that's already in the ring? Sewer, sewer wastewater kind of details, was that something that you, was part of your planning scope?
Yes, I, yeah, I just, I just knew you said something about it.
And as of right now, is it proposed that that sewer line will flow into the line of front lawn Dayton?
Just looking at our utility plan, that's a middle application. We're actually connecting the sewer lines with the interior of the property. Again, there's a sewer design that runs north side.
Okay, so let me ask my second question. So there's, like, if it is going to be connecting through the residential line that runs along Dayton, there's been a history, I don't know exactly what the issue is, but like, I'm seeing works folks up there pretty frequently at the end of our street where Dayton hits Campfield. Um, and so just with the residential wastewater and sewer usage as it is, there seems to be something going on there. I would think with added volume, there may be something to be looked at just to make sure that there might be no impact to that situation. So I would ask both, you know, the client and the town to be thinking about that. Or how does the town propose to address that? Or how do you guys have, have a client address those kinds of things? I guess it's my question.
I think, no, I was gonna say, as part of the application process, we'll have to pull permits from the various utilities. So the table review of the sewer, as part of that.
Okay. Uh, and then I think just kind of going back to something that was asked before or stated before, so I'm gonna ask it as a question, so it gets into the record. Do you honestly feel like the comparisons to Chick-fil-A and Chipotle locations, which are on Route ten, as the previous resident mentioned, or the Dunkin' Hours, which admittedly, yes, the hours may be the same, but the operating model is different? Or even the Friendly's that's been there for thirty years, that's been said over and over, which is a different business model? Do you really feel as an expert that those are apt comparisons to what's being presented here today?
So my testimony regarding the control line particularly was specifically with our orders and board required those two applications that specific air struggle systems to be installed. That was.
Right, and there was reference made to the Dunkin' Hours, but that's a different business model. There's no drive-through there, so that's not really an apt comparison. And again, the Friendly's that was there for thirty years was not the same business model. It was a fast casual, not a, not a fast food drive-through model.
Yeah, we, I said a couple times, we're gonna work with him dollars. So we're gonna go back and we're gonna come back on that.
I, I did, but my next question is, do you really believe that those are apt comparisons?
I don't think he made the comparison, so I'm, I'm missing.
Okay. All right. My last question is for you. Has no one ever told you that your condescending?
You got me there.
My name is Catherine Rockwood, I'm ninety-six Sun Valley Way. I'll try and keep this quick, because I think we're very tired. Um, you've expressed a couple times that the business model is shifted to a drive-through as opposed to a sit-down restaurant for good years. Um, and I think someone asked earlier about DoorDash and sort of delivery apps and those sorts of things. McDonald's has something called Nick Delivery. Is that addressed in this application about McDonald's delivery people?
Yes, so again, it's rear area. The, there's four spaces along the drive-through side, so that's the north side of the building. Four spaces designated for mobile orders, so that's, that's the only housing of the various delivery service.
So those are the same parking spots for the people who will be blocked by the delivery truck on the left side and the employees that are parked back there?
No, the delivery truck will not go on the drive-through side. Uh, but I will say that designating those spaces is no different than not designating them because there would be that same traffic volume coming to site and using a different space. So the intent is to locate them all in a certain area. So that's easier for, one, the staff to get out there to bring them to delivery or the various parties to go get to the store and pick it up.
Does the parking lot take into account the number of delivery drivers? Do you have any statistics from McDonald's or DoorDash or any sort of similar application as to how many people come in and out of this type of restaurant?
I don't know, and I think we can definitely provide that.
It just seems like it might be quite perfect at this point, post-COVID. Most people seem to do DoorDash and actually appear in restaurants. Um, thank you for that. Um, let's see. A couple of questions. He showed, there was a drawing that he showed a couple minutes ago, what regard to the tractor trailer and the delivery. I don't think it's any evidence, but I think it's probably the eight five between food.
It's, uh, it's sheet eighteen from the site plan set that was submitted.
So he showed that the tractor trailer really would be coming from, um, toward, with the middle of town, from like where the train station is, coming into McDonald's? And then making a left?
Yes, this plan shows it coming southbound on Speedwell and making left into.
And would a tractor trailer be able to make a right-hand turn into McDonald's?
Yeah, I agree to provide that as a good for the next.
Is that, that spot? And I was just sort of curious to know how the tractor trailer would make it from underneath the train truck to get to the McDonald's? If that has been, you know, something that you consider?
Yeah, I would move to that.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Joy Ann Devene, I live at thirty-one Campfield Place, Mark's Plains. Um, quick question, why is the tractor trailer on Dayton Road in this photo?
We show it exiting the site on the Dayton.
So if the tractor trailers will be exiting up to Dayton Road?
This plan shows that it is possible, yes.
Okay. And also, um, you said before people wouldn't go under her. The other lady said they would only pull this back and all sit her. So people are gonna make a right turn there. Anything you do away with that, they're gonna go out, the regular on Speedwell, they're gonna make a right, then they're gonna make another right up to Dayton, they're gonna go down Dayton, around Campfield and out Academy to the light. Because anybody that lives in this town knows that you cannot make a left turn on Speedwell Avenue. So that's just something else to think about. And also with the crosswalk. Um, I don't know if anybody's aware or saw that the police posted on Facebook a study that they recently did that they caught over a hundred cars not complying with yielding to pedestrians in the crosswalk. And they were able to ticket forty-four of them, but they couldn't ticket the rest because they didn't have enough people. Do you have a question? I was asked if you were aware of that letter from the police.
I don't know.
Are you asking me?
Um, whoever wants to answer it.
No, no, you're not. You have to ask him.
Okay, are you aware that the police recently did a study about the crosswalk situation in town?
No, I haven't looked at that.
Well, maybe you should look into that. Thank you very much.
Jill Sisier, eleven Dayton Road. I lived directly behind this property. I've lived there for thirty-two years. Um, I just need clarification before I ask the question. Is this McDonald's or is this the property owner? Who will own this property and accept it through?
The property owner.
So it's not gonna be like traditional McDonald's usually owns their property.
I can't speak to that. I don't know what the traditional model is.
Um, you mentioned that the crosswalk was gonna be moved to make it safer. Safer for who? People entering and exiting McDonald's? But definitely not safer for people making left-hand turns out of Dayton Road? Because the crosswalk is pretty close already. And now you wanna make it closer to Dayton Road? And if anybody's ever trying to pull out and make the left off of Dayton Road during rush hour, you have to time it. You have to time it and you have to make your move when you can. And now all of a sudden, the crosswalk is gonna be getting closer to those people turning left. And I just don't believe that it is a safer alternative. I feel like it's to accommodate your entrance and exits. Um, but, you know, the expert, he said it is for a safer movement to make it safer. Um, over the sixty McDonald's that you did work on, how many were on a lot this size?
I mean, I don't have that Dayton property, but I've worked on larger ones, but I've also worked on a lot that are much smaller.
And how many were in small towns that border residential areas?
So I, I actually counted products I've worked on that were adjacent to residential. So about a McDonald's building per residence property. And of those sixty, so, uh, worked on thirteen were residential as immediate digits.
And they were all approved? Um, you mentioned that you want, you're requesting four AM to midnight hours, but you also stated that employees would arrive probably an hour earlier and leave the lot an hour later. And you also mentioned that the employee parking would be proposing would be in the back of the lot, right up against my property line. So from three AM to one AM, I could be hearing employees, the cars, their radios, them hanging out. Um, because you've been comparing to Friendly's and believe me, Friendly's had some issues, but their hours were tolerable.
So I'll say that putting the employee spaces at the rear of the property, so the eastern and western bay, it limits the turnover, so we trap less people coming in and out because we're restricting that just employees.
Benefit to McDonald's, not to the neighborhood?
No, it's, you know, the number of cars that will be using that area is at the time.
Also, the menu signs, you mentioned something about the various or something. You were asking about the menu signs for the drive-through, that they're really not signs because they're not advertising, but aren't they advertising their menu?
No, I, I view signs as something that advertises the property. And the menu boards are not visible from the driveway. You can only see them when you're immediately onsite and using the drive-through lanes. So they're advertising what's being sold in the building, not advertising McDonald's as a, as a weight function.
And dumpster, strategically parked in the back of the parking lot, away from everybody else's vision except myself, my family, our backyard. Um, what is the proposal or what is typically, uh, there's rat problems a lot of times in your restaurants. And we're the broader restaurant. And now I just to make it obvious, we have brought Friendly's up. They tried to put their dumpster back there years ago and the town shot it down. But now all of a sudden, it's in this proposal to be in that back corner. And I don't care if it's enclosed, we know residents comply. Um, I'm just, is that because that's the only space because it is such a small lot?
It's the ideal space for the.
For, for McDonald's, one second. And the delivery, um, thirty to forty minutes, thirty to forty minutes, I get to have the exhaust tubes of the delivery truck run in?
No, so New Jersey state law requires for no truck entrance, so that would be something that's enforceable.
But, okay, but obviously cars will be itemizing the double drive-through. Um, is there a environmental expert that will be coming? Is there anything for, like, that?
No.
So we have no environmental expert coming in any of the meetings to talk about night, uh, lighting, noise, exhaust pollution, anything like that?
I touched upon the performance standards and testified that the project doesn't comply with the state requirements for those.
Um, is there a required setback for the dumpster adjacent to a residential property?
Not that I saw in the ordinance.
I, I wasn't aware. I, I looked for many hours. And is there any plans for any outdoor seating?
Nope, there's no outdoor seating.
Um, let's just see before I lose my mind. Okay, I just, I think that's all I have.
Are you, are you Miss, are you Miss Sessour?
Yes, I am.
Here.
Here.
This is here. Um, no, I, I just, before you leave, I thought we were talking. Yeah, I can hear you. You have lot six, correct?
Lot six.
I am, I wonder, or I'm entitled.
I got you. Okay, thank you.
We have five seconds. Is that okay with you? Well, my first question is gonna be if you're coming back? Next month? So everybody that had the legal.
Just your name and address, please.
Oh, sorry, Lisa Schroeder, ninety-seven Maple Avenue. So this expert will return for additional comments from the public next week? Great, okay. It would be great if you could pull up the graphic showing the delivery truck again? I feel like, I know the, the one, when you were talking about how it's not going to be a problem for people parked in those spaces on the left, is there a different graphic that you showed?
It's a colorized version of the same thing, yeah.
Okay. So can you, can you just show us where it will park?
So we have the option of staging where my cursor is. So to the left of the building or south of the building, this area here. You'll notice that the path that's, um, filled in in yellow, that's, that's the travel path. So that's the full truck and trailer, uh, the area that it needs for the wheels and everything to move through the site. It narrows to this area because again, the truck is.
But the only way they can park there is if no cars are parked there, right? Otherwise, it's blocking women?
If there's cars parked there, they're blocking women, yes.
Okay, so then where does it park if there's cars there there? Because I think you've characterized that left side as the preferred entryway, right? So that probably would fill up first. So then where would the delivery truck go?
Next option would be, again, the rear parking area. So they can stop in this area or if these spaces are open, um, instead of blocking, they can pull into that area. Same width here is twenty feet, so if a truck is parked there, there's sufficient room for a car to get, uh, around it.
Is anybody from McDonald's going to testify? Or did they provide you with any actuals that informed your, your expert testimony?
Yes.
Sorry, I have two questions, but yeah, to which question?
The latter. And as to the former, no, we don't anticipate having someone from McDonald's testify.
What were the data points that they provided you to inform your, your expert testimony?
So they're designing, so there's certain criteria we have to, to meet with the layout, the drive-through, have that all put together, they have certain distances, widths, radiuses, curves that we have to meet in our zone. So that, that's what we see on the screen, which is a function, a site plan that will support McDonald's for this specific site that we are applying to.
So they provided you with those data points that they did not provide you with expected business volumes?
Correct, I'm the design engineer, I'm tasked with designing the site, making sure, so to question.
That the site has to accommodate the expected business volumes, right? So they did give you those data points as you designed this particular site?
Correct.
Okay. Um, are you aware of sworn testimony from a public hearing in Wellmet, Illinois, where a representative of McDonald's states that on average, uh, the average McDonald's store doesn't have a transaction today?
There's none.
Okay. That test, is, is it possible that I can submit that video into this record? It is sworn testimony and it's from a man named Chris Stepp, who's the director of operations for McDonald's?
I mean, the board attorney controls the evidence, but I don't think that's relevant in this case.
Do you have something for me, something that the board would look at? And I, I'm not the final order, I give advice to the board on what to accept. Um, it would have to be, yeah, I have to see it beforehand, understand where it came from. Typically, an out-of-court statement would not be admissible as evidence, but if you have something, um, I'm sure that you can get my, my number, I'll give it to you afterwards. have something, I'm sure that you can get my number. I'll give it to you afterwards.
Yeah, well, I'm really just.
Please, please, so if you do, give me something and I'll try and be able to give the board an opinion prior to you seeking to get it in.
Because it seems very convenient for McDonald's that they're not going to produce somebody that has this knowledge. They have not counseled their experts about this knowledge. I'm pulling a data point from another planning board hearing in another place, where actually they also tried to build a store really close to a school in the middle of a crowded downtown, so this seems to be their model. So how are we able to get that data point if they're not going to put somebody forward that could provide it?
You can speak to Mr. Brewer, that was not actually a question, but you can speak to him and he will provide you that answer. And it is 10:59, so we are going to cut it off now. Okay, I have more questions, but he'll be back next week.
They're next month?
Actually, next month? And they will all be here and we'll be here, and I believe we're going to plan to have the meeting here in as well? Okay, thank you all for coming out.
I think everybody, somebody had asked what the date is. The date is always the third Monday of the month, so it will be the third Monday in October. Excuse me, everybody, there may be a discrepancy on the date. Let's, let's. Karen, you know?
October 21st.
October 21st. In this room, same time, 7:30. There won't be any further notice, but it will continue on that date.